The Union, Union 26 and the Region. So we need six Union 26. We need three, three Union 26. Four? But we have, because we have three.
And two, two.
Alright.
Let's do it.
You know what I learned working in the high school? Veteran teacher said, "Never be away from your keys. Hang a while." Not because people will take it. It's because if something happens...
Okay, so I will call the Region to order at six thirty PM. Because we are all here. We just get to all be here. Great. Um, Madam Vice Chair of Union 26, would you like to call your meeting to order?
Yes. Um, yes, can I call the meeting of Union 26 to order? We're all here, so no need for a vote?
Yep, perfect.
Well, I mean, we're all...
We're all in person.
All in person. Yes. Alright, so our first order of business is to go to executive session. So I'll move for the Region. That the Regional School Committee will now consider entering executive session pursuant to MGL C30A Section 21A. Purpose two: to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Superintendent Dr. E. Ziyamar Herman with the intent to return to open session.
Second.
Anna, uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Sorry, Margaret? Deb?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Sarah Bass?
Yes.
I move the same for Union 26.
Second.
Okay, we'll go to vote. Um, Margaret?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we're in session.
And Sarah Bass.
Sarah Bass.
Sorry, Sarah Bass. Also yes. Perfect. Okay, we shall return.
Yeah, I'd like to move to adjourn Union 26.
Second.
And so we'll take a vote, Sarah Bass?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Emma, yes, Jennifer?
Yes.
I think you were adjourned. Oh, William.
William, William, yes.
Okay. We are adjourned.
Enjoy the air conditioning.
Okay. So, our first order of business is public comment, which we received some written comment, which is attached to the agenda. It did not receive any voicemails. Next is the superintendent's update.
Point of order?
Oh, yes.
Says Amherst should be called to order before?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I would like to call the Amherst School Committee to order at 6:55. All members are here in person. Thank you.
Apologies, Amherst.
I would really too.
I would. Good evening, everyone. I think Megan is pulling up PowerPoint, and I have, I wanted to clarify my thoughts, so I have notes all over the place, so excuse me. You pull that up?
Yep.
Alright, let's do it. So, it is really great this evening to start off with, as always, the reminder of the district priorities, student safety and wellbeing, healing and stabilization of the district, and accountability for equity. And we're gonna start off with inside the regional classrooms. So, earlier this year, our engineering for social good students at the high school were featured for their incredible work designing the SARA Smart Garment. I'm pleased to share that they have now officially filed a patent for their design, which is a remarkable accomplishment and speaks to their innovation and perseverance. I also want to say that the two projects that were presented in front of the committee, I think you may remember the gazebo and then the one with the 3D printer, we met. I met with them and with operations. They are, the gazebo project, operations has committed to working with them. Adam met, Adam is our manager, and so Adam met with them. We talked about walking the site, getting a permit, and what that's going to look like. So that's going to be a project for the upcoming year. We also decided that we were going to possibly use our funds, probably our donation from Amherst College to help fund that project for the students. We're just going to make sure that we can, and it's gonna be their senior project. We also were waiting for the other group to come back and give us a pricing, because they're going to talk about what they need in a budget and present that to us. So I wanted to give the committee an update on that. And then our eighth grade students, our middle schoolers, recently transformed whimsical creature drawings from Wildwood's Kindergarten and first grade students into 3D sculptures. So it really shows that even though there's collaboration amongst the region and elementary, and it really helped to see that our older students were coming back and working with our first graders. So they took their drawings and made 3D sculptures. And so great things are happening in both districts. Strategic planning, I believe, attached to the update is some of the feedback that was received. I wanted to clarify, of the 70 invitees for session three, less than 25 attended total. We did have teachers, librarians, assistant principals, educators, central office representation, were in the room, both days for the larger group, and then for the smaller group was like the leadership. It really helped, and that's amongst other community stakeholders and committee members that were present. It really helped to have this work move forward. I was not in the room, and that was a part of it, because I realized that a lot of times as superintendent, when I enter the room and I make a comment, or so it becomes the final say. So it really helped to give everyone the freedom to kind of work. But I have been working with the facilitator. We have one more session to come forth, and the tentative dates are July 29th to the 31st. And that's where we'll be finalizing the strategies and milestones and actions. But it is not my plan, it is our plan, so it really helps that everyone was in the room. We have teachers that are committed to coming back and working with us and finalizing this in the summer. Middle school schedule, hot topics. I'm trying to hit some hot topics. So, back, grievance was filed around equitable workload. We received a PRS complaint at the region for the high school around whether or not the flex block fell within the mandated structure time as by DESI. In reviewing that, I decided as superintendent that I did not want any to be blindsided, so I also said like, let's review what's happening at the middle school as well. We were already reviewing it because of the grievance, let's look. We realized that there were some concerns with advisory. Guided study fit fine. Although guided study was not in the program of study, it did have more of a structure and academic base to it. However, advisory did not. I mean, kind of, kind of mimicked recess. And so what we did was, we were like, okay, well, let's just make it more so of, it's about the SEL strategies, that's ingrained within the core classes, or all classes. However, after meeting with Principal Rajuas Wang, and hearing his concerns, him hearing his staff concerns, us reviewing everything, what we decided we were going to do is we would reinstate it into the schedule, but we would structure the curriculum better, so that if there were concerns to come back from DESI, we would kind of already have implemented a more structured curriculum in there. So in the summer, he's gonna establish a advisory work group this summer to kind of help identify. He's gonna work with the staff to kind of have clear implementation of the framework, make sure that it aligns, it fits within the definition of DESI for structured time. And we're gonna continue to monitor it from the central office level. There was also some concerns around licensure requirements, and I wanted to clarify that at no point did our office ever respond to any licensure inquiries with, I need to fix that, because it says, oh, has responded to licensure inquiries without hostility and retaliation. Not, at no point did we ever hostilely or do that. If it ever came forward, it was always, we'll look into it, we did. One of the things I wanted to be clear is that when we came in this year, there were requests for waiver renewals. I asked when I first came in, because to sign a waiver renewals, I have to sign it, and I have to sign it against my license. My license is actually placed, my license number is placed on the bottom of the waiver request. I asked HR, how do I know this person is making progress? Some individuals have had repeated waivers. So I put in place that if I'm gonna apply for a waiver for someone, they at least have to show that they're making progress towards getting full licensure. And so DESI does allow, and I put the website up there for DESI, the DESI does allow for districts to apply for waivers. There are different waivers that's available. There's licensure hardship waivers, critical shortage waivers, and so it does allow you to apply for a waiver. We are not the only district in Western Mass. What we also do is, if there are licensed applicants in the pool, they are considered first. So, we look for, our goal is to make sure that there's licensed and qualified educators, and that's the priority. But the licensed educator takes precedence over the unlicensed educator and having to file for a waiver. So I just wanted to clarify that. Also, in terms of postings, individuals who we posted for their positions, even though they're currently in them, we reposted it because they were not licensed. And then we gave them an opportunity based on the licensure expiration date, the waiver expiration date. Some individuals, their waiver expiring June 30th, if they don't have an extension on the waiver or show progress towards, show a licensure, then we will be posting their position. So I just wanted to clarify that. Fiscal convening, we had a meeting with Mars representatives today. We're gonna send them a formal RFP to make sure it matches within their services. They were recommended to us to facilitate the convening. There is some work that I think that they do that I think will be critical, where they actually research town's finances. It's actually affordable, it's a document, and so we're looking to see if we could kind of get that document to be like a starting and a talking point. Back, so we kind of are in conversation with them around that. And then I wanted to present, thank you, I wanted to present, as I, and I had to craft this. I usually speak from the heart, but I wanted to make sure that my tone is right. I have to do tone checks, so I did it. As I present my final update of this school year, I want to take a moment to publicly acknowledge the significance of this milestone, my completion of the first year as your superintendent. It has been a year, July 1st, marked by learning, listening, leading, and laying a new foundation, and I'm deeply grateful to have done this in partnership with you. Stepping into this role has been a personal and professional journey. I entered with a vision centered on stability, healing, and coherence. I came with a mission to reimagine what's possible for our students and to align our systems to what we value, equity, excellence, and community. That mission has only deepened. This year has not only affirmed my purpose, it has reminded me that this work is not simply my job, but it is my calling. I want to take a moment to sincerely thank Amherst, Pelham, and the regional school committees. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in this role, and thank you for the trust and responsibility you have extended to me. I appreciate your willingness to engage in the hard conversations and to challenge when necessary and to support the vision of progress when clarity calls for it. We have not always agreed, but we have remained committed to the shared goal of improving outcomes for all students, and that's what matters. Making it to the end of a school year always takes a team, and this year was no exception for me. I want to acknowledge that we've had our share of moments, but I also believe that it's in those very moments that we as a team are going to continue to grow stronger. That's where resilience takes root and begins to harden the structures that hold us together. I've seen that growth this year, and I'm hopeful about what we're able to do in the years ahead. There's a quote that I feel fits the reflection on our work together. "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much," by Helen Keller. I carry this mindset with me as your superintendent. I deeply respect this opportunity you've granted to me and remain humbled by the responsibility you've entrusted with me, me with. I'm thankful for what we've begun as a team, and I look forward to continuing this journey with partnership, honesty, and our hearts. As I look ahead to my second year, I do so with a deep sense of purpose and gratitude, not just because there is more work to be done, but because I get to do it for students and alongside a dynamic team of educators, staff, caregivers, communities, and all of you, my committee members. This year, I've seen resilience in hard times, compassion in quiet moments, and creativity in how we move forward. Together, we've celebrated state and national recognitions in athletics, the arts, and academics. I've walked into classrooms where students felt safe and seen, and through schools that reflected the values of care and connection. These moments have reminded me that we are not just educators or simply leaders, but we are a community united by a shared calling to do what is best for our children. I am humbled, I am truly humbled, by the opportunity to serve as your superintendent, and I remain committed to leading with clarity, integrity, and love. As your superintendent, I carry forward a vision of a unified school community where every child is seen, every voice is valued, and every adult is supported in helping one another grow. Together, we will nurture the whole child, honor the role of families, and build a strong legacy of ARPS while shaping a bold and truly inclusive future. This mission is not mine or ours alone, it belongs to everyone. And while the road ahead may not always seem easy, I know that when we walk it together, hand in hand, with trust, care, and a shared belief in our students, we are capable of creating something extraordinary for children. So let's move forward with purpose, with passion, and with the unwavering belief that greatness lives here, and together we can grow it. I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for this great opportunity, and more so to the committees for your continued partnership as we strive toward a future worthy of every child in our care.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there time for questions?
Yes, I do want to say we do have a very large meeting, so if we could go
Once.
Once, that would be great. Okay, Sarah, what do you got?
Thank you, Dex. Strategic planning.
Yes.
So, I'm glad things are moving along. Last time, I think we heard about this process, we had a lot of comments on the Portrait of a Graduate.
Yes.
Where's that at?
So, the comments were taken into consideration, I think in session three was presented. I was trying to attack, that's why we were abruptly, we were trying to like download the thing, and we were having system issues. But there is a draft where we actually took the feedback in session two, between session one and session two, because the committee feedback was about, where's the academics? So in session two, the participants actually went around and started to talk about the specific academics to be each one of those targeted competencies. And then that was incorporated into the draft for session three in terms of, you know, the academic skills that students would be able to put forth. So that was there, and then we also took the feedback around alignment to the mission and vision and goals that the school committee has in the policies. And so what you'll see in the draft, and I'll, we'll attach the draft when my computer decides to act right, to Board Docs. The, you'll see that it says like align, you'll see it, what we did is we took the mission vision from the school committees and from the policies, and we put that in, and we aligned the goals, and we, you put the plan towards the goals.
Anything further? Excellent. Okay, next up is the executive direction, sorry. Words are hard for me today. Executive Director Structure. Dr. Z?
Yes.
We're switching, bringing it up. Thank you. Alright, so, I'll skip the title slide and I'll move straight in. So, when I stepped into this role, like I said in my thank you, it's more than a job for me, and I'm a very reflective individual. I take a lot of the feedback and I determine what's best. But I've also known that it's hard for one person to run an entire district by themselves. So the reason why we're looking, or what informed the shift, is that our current model kind of wasn't working in terms of communication, in terms of access. And the change is superintendent leadership, what does that look like? How do we clearly do this? Apparational clarity, student-centered coordination, making sure students' needs are met, and many times making sure students' needs are met. making sure students' needs are met, and many times making sure students' needs are met happen from making sure that principals have the support that they need, directors have the supports that they need, families have the supports that they need. So looking at a structure that could build leadership capacity is designed to support a superintendent's capacity and ensure communication is streamlined, no critical areas left unsupported. It's about moving the districts forward intentionally collaboratively. So I did some research. I did some research because one of the things that also came forth was that in the budgeting process previously, the assistant superintendent role was removed. But everything out, you make lemonade with lemons, right? And you kinda sit down and think about what would work best. And having sit in the position for some time, kinda review what's best practices nationwide, but then coming into what's happening in Massachusetts around neighboring areas. And so looked at different models. You have, I know that Springfield and Holyoke are larger than we are, but I also attached their organizational chart as, as an example. Where you see, for example, Springfield has chiefs. They have a superintendent and they have chiefs of school or chiefs of different areas. And Holyoke has a superintendent, they kinda have executive directors. Now their positions are, actually have a person where this is their kinda like full-time position. That's, that's a difference between our, our model. Because our model kinda is more towards what we feel needs to be organic or kinda looked at in here. Stillwater, Hartford Public Schools, Kansas City, Lee County, they also had, and that's like other states that I was looking at. I just wanted to point out examples of where they also had similar structures, but they have a standalone. Saga's public schools in Massa, and I don't know if I'm saying it right. I'm just pronouncing it however I feel. I am, okay. Their, their, their org chart, and I, I pointed them out because their enrollment numbers are like 2,400. So they're around the same enrollment size as ARPS. And they have, this is their org chart, it's, it's, it's attached. And then I took a snapshot of what their website has in terms of their model, because their org chart was from 2010. So I wanted to make sure that the org chart kinda matched what is currently there. There is one change in terms of like an executive director of, I can't remember what the title is. But other than that, the accountability and instruction kinda changed to a different title that's on their current website. But they also have EDs, but there's again, I believe, are standalone positions versus our model. But I did see where that model was in place in a, like an ED structure was in place in different districts in the state. So this is the model that we're going to move forward. We piloted for the spring to summer, because June 30th would end the pilot. And then we're gonna move kinda forward with. The EDs will remain a stipending position for extra duties unless at some point, and not no time soon, we'd be coming in a, and like no time, we're not in a fiscal place to do anything different. So it will remain a stipending position where it also allows the flexibility that if individuals change or qualifications change, then we are able to shift the duties to someone else. For example, I asked all of the EDs to make sure that because they stand in when, I was just moving my hand. Because they stand in when I'm not present, you know, to make sure that they hold the proper licensure. And each of them, which would be like they have an assistant superintendent, superintendent licensure. I believe one individual is applying for their licensure, so they should have that updated by July 1. Everyone else, when I checked this afternoon, they had, they, they had some form of their provisional licensure in that area. They also have a broad scope of knowledge, and they're, they're working in terms of the leadership capabilities and competencies and skills. So they work well with everyone, and they're effective, efficient, and communicate well, which doesn't speak to everyone else under, like at any point. I, I would like to say as a superintendent, I have a really good team. I have a good team, bless you. I have a really good team of directors. I know there's concerns about relationships, but for me, my team works well and they work hard. And my only expectation is that we come in and we work for the children and we do what we, we're committed to do. So at any point, the ED structure could change to where someone else could step in, you know, to, to those roles. In terms of the fiscal, when we looked at it, the one singular assistant superintendent, their salary was 135. I believe their base salary plus fringe. So initially, just because of the four stipending rules, instead of having a separate, like these individuals aren't going anywhere. They would have been directors with an assistant superintendent still supporting, right? They wouldn't have been executive directors. I see your face, Sharon Marshall. But they would have been directors of their requisite areas. And then we would have had an assistant superintendent to support the superintendent. In this model, we have four executive directors who are still over their role, which is very similar to how the assistant superintendent was formerly. They were the assistant superintendent, but they were over a specific division. And this, in the, these individuals actually provide for shared leadership, targeted oversight, strategic depth. It allows for a collaborative model. And for me, in doing the math, looking at a $105,000 difference in terms of what we would have to incur, looking at four, the cumulative amount of four stipends over one individual's salary. So we had a phased spring, like a spring, spring to twen, to summer. I'm a pilot. We have a retreat planned for July so that we can work together to kinda hone in on some of the things we didn't see were like strengths. We also plan to kinda send out, I plan to send out a survey to like the directors to get their feedback on what they think, thought worked well, what didn't work well. And then when the community comes, when the community, when the school year starts, we're gonna do a broader climate and culture survey for staff, not just on the ED structure, but overwhelmingly. What PD, how did you feel about professional development? What do you feel was missed? What are your concerns? We also wanna capture some of the things that we've heard were coming around. And I heard a lot bubbling up at the end of the school year around our race and racial concerns, and making sure that we're addressing the needs of bullying, harassment, how, how mediation. So we wanted to kinda address that. But we were gonna do a thorough culture and climate survey and see if they, if individuals felt like things shifted or how we can do things better. And then actively monitor it and create feedback loops to refine the system, because everything is gonna have a hiccup or a pitfall. I also felt very clearly that it's kinda a model that reflects our towns and communities. I think about the fact that when I look at the town council or the select board, it's not really one or two people. It's a collective voice and group of individuals, even though there's a chair, even though, you know, there's a head. But there's still a collective group of individuals who sit together and kinda work as internal leaders, elevate. It allows us to problem solve, have diverse perspectives, and even historical knowledge at the table, making sure that everyone is represented in there. And so I'm gonna stop here and say you cannot scale, what you do not structure. And it's not just a reorg, it's recommitment to excellence, accountability, and the district's ability to move forward. And I'll leave it for questions.
Jennifer.
Thank you, Dr. Z, for that presentation. And thank you for the, the, the work and care and research that went into developing this model. I think it makes a lot of sense. And it goes along with a pattern that I've seen with you, which is that you are distributing power and responsibility, not hoarding it, which I really appreciate. And you're empowering others and growing leaders. I mean, the, the four executive directors, I, I know are already experienced leaders, but you're giving, you're, you're growing their experience and you're giving them opportunities to, to grow and stretch. I like how you talked about elevating leaders and having a collective voice. I think this all makes a lot of sense. I'm, I, the one, my one question is I'm curious about athletics and why you chose to have that report directly to you.
So, go back to our thing. So the one concern that I had with athletics was how it crosses, not, it's not just at the high school. It's actually regional. So in having her report just to the high school principal, she actually supports the high school and middle school. That was one. Two, there was a lot of work that I think still needs to be done in terms of athletics, especially with supporting her in the budgetary work, streamlining. Like how do we get to bring her vision forward? And I felt like we could kinda support that and, I could support that and work with that. But she does work with everyone well. So that was, the initial idea was she's not only, like initially when I came in, she was reporting to the high school principal, but she serves the region. So that was the initial thing in terms of organization. And then I looked at the work that needed to be done in supporting and expanding athletics.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Sir?
Maybe this is jumping ahead since you haven't had your retreat yet. But I, I mean, I guess I have to assume you think this is working. It's helping move, what you get the work done, make sure things are done in a timely fashion, and you're, you know, manage your schedule and all. So, so clearly you think this has a lot of potential.
Yes. And I feel like with the retreat, we recruit, we sent out a RFP, the Collaborative, is who's going to be facilitating our retreat. They're also facilitating a retreat for the principals, and they'll be assisting with facilitating Admin Week. One of the things that I asked the Collaborative to do was to help us kinda identify our gaps in working as a team and to support us. So the individuals interviewed every one of us, asked us like for feedback, all, all of the individuals and myself around like the work that we're doing, what do we think? And then they're, they kinda created the training. I haven't, I don't know what the training is. I told them I wanna experience it with the team, so we're gonna step into that. And we're also gonna look at how do we support an entire, an entire three districts? Like what does that look like? How do, how do we create that opportunity? Because it may seem to work for me, but again, we wanna hone in on how does it work for everyone? And so that's the key thing. You know, it helps that the directors aren't just like, every director isn't solely coming to me. They actually have now someone who can kinda provide them that guidance and that support and that communication in the meantime. And then we circle back and we check in. I, like tomorrow, I'm going to be out. We spent an hour and a half today as a team, like hashing out like, hey guys, you know, this is what's happening. These are our reports that we need to do. These are things that we're gonna work on. What do you need from me? And we're all talking about as a, like it's literally a team structure, and then we come back in. So I feel like it is working, like from my view, but that's why I wanna survey and hear from everyone else how it's working for them.
Can I follow up? Yeah, quickly. So are you surveying not just the directors in this pilot, but also everyone else to see if it's working for them to have to go through? This new model is, is working for the principals or the, or the deans or the educators?
So right now, who we would, who we would survey is who's available, the leadership that's still there. And then in this, when, in the fall, when everyone else, like all the teachers and deans, they're on vacation now. Come back, we would do a culture and climate survey. But we would, we do, we will survey the immediate direct, like the SPT, the strategic, the superintendent's planning team and the principals to see how this works.
William?
Hi, yes. So I just have a question. I know you have the superintendent at the top, and then you have, underneath there, you have the principals, the athletics, and then Pelham School administrators. And then below that, you have the four directors. I guess my only question is if we don't have a assistant superintendent and we have the four executive directors, I feel like they should be a shared report to the four up at the top. And if they're not, when you step away, how are those individuals then now over the principals if they're not in the work chart where it flows through them?
Can you repeat?
Because typ, typically, the superintendent, and then you would have an assistant superintendent, and everyone under the district would fall underneath the assistant superintendent. The way you have the chart laid out now, you have the four executive directors, but there are four individuals, or four titles, whatever, that's a direct report to the superintendent, but they do not report to those executive directors. So how does that work? When they step in, and how does it work for them to then be able to? I, I know we had the bullying issues where the principals necessarily weren't doing what the, you know, the people in the other roles were doing. And so how do we make sure that this flow chart really is best for our district? I think maybe it should be a shared flow back and forth, and I'll be quiet, sorry.
So when I, when I've stepped away each time, and there have been instances that occurred at the schools, there's a couple of things, when this first came up, it was, we don't, initially you ask if you have an area of concern or, or you have a question or something that comes up, you would contact the requisite ED of that area. And that's where you're able to see, like if you have a human resources issue, you would contact the, the ED of strategy and human resources. If there's an academic issue, you would contact the student academic success. If you have a family bullying DCF issue, you would contact the family advocacy or student well-being person, because that's the person most versed in that area to support the work. However, if there is an emergency that arrives, we have identified one of the four as an incident commander for all, all times. So that one individual would be the person that would, you would go to if there's an emergency, and that has worked. The thing is, is that during, during the time that I am away, it is not about who they report to, it's about who can support them in my absence. Because my job, even if I was present, is to support the leader, is to step in, is to move things forward. And so that's what the team does. I will also say that when an emergency arose, and I was out during this pilot time, they came together as a collective team, even though they called the one person. The incident commander then communicated with the team, and the team was able to come up and support the school. So whether one person went physically to the school, the other person called operations and made sure individuals were present. The, like, so it literally flowed well. We have our own communication chat or a communication channel. So even though I wasn't present, I was still able to see like this was going on. And then we debrief throughout the day. Like at the end of the date or that I was absent, it was, hey, Dr. Z, this is what occurred. Or I would get a call, Dr. Z, this is happening at a school. Principals also are still able to contact me if they need be, unless I'm unavailable. But there is a support process in place. It's not about, like I said, it's not about reporting during that time. It's supporting the work to make sure that the district can continue to run.
I think he stopped, or is he really, really still? Okay, thank you. I have Deb, and then Irv, is your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
I had two questions. One, you said you, the Collaborative, sorry. You said the Collaborative did an interview. Did they give you a, a final report, or was it an informal interaction?
No, they met with all of us to develop, like to kinda formulate and organically create the retreat. So after, I, I told them I wanted to like just experience it with everyone else.
Okay. And then I'm looking at the structure, and if you could help me understand that how the executive director of strategy and human resources, it doesn't seem like that person has any additional reports, from what I can tell. Like, you know, obviously the, some of them, executive director of operating and finance has the operation of food services, IS, and facilities, which is the same person, and procurement. And then I can't, I, I don't see how the structure is divided amongst...
So...
It goes like this.
So, so a couple of things. Under that individual, one, they have climate and culture. They are, they are, you'll see that they also have litigations. They are not just now involved with adult litigations, but they're also present, like when I meet with the attorneys for student cases, so that if I step away, there's someone else who knows what's moving forward in terms of student litigation and cases. I also say that in the fall, we have a safe and supportive schools individual. We have someone who's transitioning into safe and supportive schools, and that's going to fall under strategy and human resources. This is not there because I need to update, it needs to update, but that'll, that, that's gonna fall under there.
Okay. Thank you. Irv?
Just following up on what Deb was at. Under, under the...
Irv, can you use the, the mic because of the...
Under the organizational chart where you have, under the executive director of finance and operations, there's an actual business office, there's an actual food service, actual information system person. These are, these are actually people in each one of these areas.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
However, and these other... However, in these other areas, there are not necessarily people there. These are, these, one is a functional area and one is like a service-related areas. So when you say that, when you're in your absence, you will have a, a, a person who people can call, and that's the IC person, incident commander. And the incident commander, then I assume, becomes the person who directs the traffic flow as to where things go. Is that correct?
Correct.
So however, I mean, and, and, and that, that makes perfect sense to me. It's just that when I look at the functional area of Executive Director of Finance and Operations, it doesn't match up with the other areas in terms of what they are doing. Again, these ones are functional, but actual, actual people who are in those positions. And, and it's, and it's, and it is an office, it is a, you know, it is food service, et cetera. But human resources, litigation, et cetera, there's not a person who is, who is in charge of or who is the litigation director, say. You understand? So those, when I'm looking at that.
I will update it and I understand, I think it's a cross between, what you're saying is a cross between duty or what that person is over versus what they actually are. So we'll change, I think what needs to fix under that is removing the word business office and just kind of making it more operational to match everything else.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Yes, no, I, I understand.
When you do it, it's like it's, the operational people are operational people.
It makes sense. I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think in general, I really like the way it's streamlined and the way the different organizational pieces hang together. I also think like it probably alleviates some of the feeling where everyone was coming to you and one person can't do everything because your superhero cake has to go in the closet sometimes, right?
I don't wear one.
Exactly. So I like that. I have a couple of just things that I'm thinking about looking at it, which is that that executive director for student academic success holds a lot within it.
Yes.
That that's, that's a very big portfolio. And, you know, and to have special ed in such an already big portfolio is, you know, anyway, that's, that's my comment basically, like Tanya is holding a lot. Don't get me wrong, I think she's very capable. I think she's terrific really from what I've seen, but I just want like there to be some cognizance of that.
Okay.
Then I think I have a similar question to William's, which is like, okay, so what happens if Marta, Tanya or Jennifer tells the, the principal X and Y? And then actually like the principal doesn't want to do it and then they come to you. Like there's a little bit of fuzziness there in that they directly report to you. Like how, I guess that's really more of a question for your office operations, but like I think everyone's got to be really well aligned on message and goals and what you're shooting for to make it work well with the different parallels of reports. And then the very last thing I would say is because of what we passed at the end of last meeting, I don't think it's probably fair to say there's a hundred and five thousand dollar cost savings. I think there might be some cost savings, but I mean, we at least put like fifty-seven into like extras. So, you know, I think that that might be for all the central office, but then a lot, a good chunk of that might go for these positions. So I just don't want to like, I think there's cost savings, I agree, but I don't want to like overstress it either.
So let me go back to the, thank you for the comment. Let me go back to the first one in terms of the, the reporting. It, it's, if I am not present, that's when it may become, and it's not about giving, and I, and I can see where there could be a disagreement with directives, right? And there was a, and I can say this, there was an incident that occurred in the district when I was out. I had a medical situation and I was out. When that incident occurred, I was contacted by Jen. I was partially cognizant, but she's like, Dr. Z, there's a situation. I've already contacted a chair. You know, I've already this, I've already that, this. And I said, okay, what's the situation? So she explained to me what the situation was, what her concerns were. The team together, all within their area, like came together to say, well, how can we support? What do we need to do next? And the question was, you know, what are the next, like these, this is what the team is thinking. I said, I agree, right? So I, but I was out on medical. They went ahead, they spoke with the principals and they moved forward in rectifying the situation. The one thing I think that's critical is that everyone kind of works together very well. The principals and the directors, like originally, they already, like if there's an employee issue or a student issue, they kind of already were leaning and working with each other. If principals had an issue with student attendance or family or, they were already going to Marta for advice and having those conversations. So I didn't see where there was like, if they had a curriculum concern, they were already going to Tanya for that. So there was already, already a camaraderie in terms of if I have an issue, this is my point. This is a person I go to. And they have a working relationship where they could kind of resolve, resolve things that, and I didn't see where there was, I needed to come in to resolve it. If there was, they would contact me and I would step in. And then I would say, well, what's happening here was, and I would look at it and I, but a lot of things that has occurred and I've learned, doesn't work well without that conversation. I've learned that critically before, but more so in this district. So it helps that the principals and the directors and even now that they've been EDs have that mutual professional respect of what do you think? And they actually collaborate on solving the situations. So I can see where that could happen if it, there's a conflict, but not like it, it hasn't. And if need be, it's not about reporting in my absence, it's about supporting in my absence. Because there are also situations where, that have arisen where they may be like, Dr. Z, this is a you situation. We need you to step in here. And I would say, okay, I can, or I would schedule it and I'll work to, through Megan, through them, to schedule it so that I am present and need to intervene so the district can move forward. So I'm never too far away that I can't fix it. And if it's something that requires me, it's already, it's my duty to step in and to make sure it's done.
All right. So I have Deb and William as final thoughts. And then I would like us to move on so we can get through our meeting tonight.
Are we voting on this today?
I reached out to MASC and we do not have to vote on this.
Okay. Because this is clever. It's a clever way of dealing with a financial situation. But it's a financial situation that I'm uncomfortable with when we don't have enough finances to support a professional assistant superintendent. Some of these issues are, the issues that brought us from April of 2023 to where we are now, some of these people carry very heavy loads for the district for protected classes. And it concerns me both that they, special ed and mental health sit in different places, but in particular that when you hire an assistant superintendent, you hire someone with experience. You have, you go through an interview process and a vetting process. And this doesn't allow another experienced person with those wraparound skills to come into the district.
Thank you for that, Deb. I want to go back to Bridget. Bridget, I understand what you're saying in terms of the, I'm coming, coming back. I want, understand what you're saying in terms of the cost and how it was presented. What I was presenting was if I had to take the funding and actually appropriate it to a sole superintendent, it would, this is what it wa, would have possibly cost me. Even though it's not a savings to the budget, it's, it's something that I don't have to go back and find. So I would find a better way to present that.
That's okay.
So, so thank you. I, I, I remember that. Deb, I understand the concerns and I, I can look at the, the weight of it. I, I can see, and again, in terms of leadership structures, I can, and I see another typo on the top, so I'll fix it. I can analyze it and see how it, how it works and how it flows. I think that additionally, if something isn't working well, we fix it. If something is working well, we continue it. I do feel like an assistant superintendent, no one person holds enough knowledge to, to wrap around and know every, even myself, I have touched, like I have my strengths and I know where my strengths are, I know where my medium areas are and I know where I need to build myself, right? That's why I'm going to take some courses in the fall around some areas that I think would help me in moving the districts forward. I say that to say that no one person is, even if even I found someone to balance my leadership, that person would not hold all of the knowledge base to move us the way we need to. So I understand the concern. I also, like, that's why I wanted to show that I looked at various districts to see what are they doing? How does it work? And larger districts, like I showed Springfield and Holyoke, they don't, Springfield doesn't have, I didn't see under the org chart, a specific assistant superintendent. They have chiefs over various areas and that's a much larger district. So I actually feel like I would like to give this an opportunity. If it doesn't work, we'll find a way to kind of balance it out. But a lot of the districts in Massachusetts and nationwide are moving to distributed, distribution of leadership because everything within districts are very hard to hold.
Thank you. William, final thought?
Yes, so final thought, when I, when I look at this, I just want to reiterate that say if the executive director of Student Academic Success wanted to make some curriculum changes, I, I, I still just think that under those four directors, they should have the principals and it be a shared line between superintendent, a direct report through the superintendent to the principals, but a shared line also reporting to the executive directors. I, I just think really for implementing all the things that those executive directors need to implement, it would just make a smoother workflow chart to really have them more empowered on the chart to not take away power from the administration, but to be able to have the power behind them as an assistant superintendent would.
I, I can, we could probably put a dotted line. But I also know that anything, I guess because I live it and I've lived it for the year, I understand that principals are in the room. Like they're in the room, that's who's in the work groups. That's who, like when things are happening, that's who Tanya and Stephanie and, and Jen Reese are working with in the room. That's who Katie's working with in the room. Like they're working with principals in the room and having those conversations and making those curricular changes and getting feedback. And so I can put the line so it's shared responsibility. It doesn't bother me if that's a suggestion. I just don't think it's needed because they work together. It's, it's, it happens. Again, I didn't even put names because I feel like an org chart shouldn't be tied to a person. It should be tied to how does the organization run? So I definitely, maybe then I'll, I'll put dotted lines. Maybe the next superintendent would want it that way. I don't see it as an organizational fault because principals are in the room. Like we all work together.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next up is input for our retreat. So we have, right, yes. We have had a lot of year.
I'm sorry, we've had what?
A lot of year.
A lot of year.
A lot of year. A lot, a lot of year. A lot of things. And I would like us to think about for moving forward, how we can be a better, healthier, more effective committee together. Where we can be more collaborative and more efficient. Not to say that we won't all disagree on all sorts of things because that is what, why we have a committee, to have all different viewpoints and opinions. But we can be effective and efficient and collaborative. So that being said, someone had mentioned to me previously about having like a school committee self-assessment survey. I have not had time to look into that. My guess is MASC has something that we can work towards. So those are my thoughts moving forward, but I would love to hear other people's opinions and thoughts. And, and/or you can email the, I'm going to also speak to Jennifer and say, email the chairs and we can work together to put something together because I think it'd be beneficial for everybody. Okay. We'll go this way. Jennifer?
So I wasn't able to make last year's retreat. This is going to be a joint retreat of Amherst, Pelham and the region school committees. Is that right?
We can have that discussion. Last year it was a joint. I think we can have, I think a joint retreat is great. And if committees also would like to have an individual retreat, that needs to focus on something that they need to do, I think that's also fine.
Okay. And is it usually in August?
Last year it was.
Okay, okay. And is it, sorry, is it all day, like nine to five or was it like ten to two hours? I don't remember.
It was like a meeting. We met in, yes, it was a longer meeting. I think it was like three hours maybe. We met at Amherst College. There you go.
So thank you for all that logistics. My feeling about a retreat, a board retreat, a school committee retreat is that it should be about how we can work better together as a committee. So I, I don't think I'm disclosing anything, but Rachel Figaro Smith, who's the, one of the new Pelham representatives, has emailed Sarah Bass and me and said that she has experience with training committees on more effective communication, working better together at meetings, making, having more effective meetings. So I think that's something that would be great to hear, to, to hear from her on as a, as a new school committee member, but also to someone who has experience working on things like that. So I think that like making our meetings more efficient would be a great, a great topic for the retreat. And I would love to hear as the Amherst chair, about any other topics that members think we could cover at the retreat.
Bridget?
Yeah. So the first thing I want to say is I watched school committee for a long time before I was on school committee. And that this committee all in all is the best school committee that we, that we have had in Amherst. And not just because we're all on it, but honestly, we, we in general, I want us to give credit to each other for a really hard year of a lot of important decisions and lots of meetings where we've listened well to one another.
Absolutely.
We've come to consensus decisions. And I agree with everyone that the, that the meetings are too long. You know that I fall asleep by 10 o'clock, so it's a lot, it's a lot. But, but putting that aside, I feel like we should also have some sense of pride of all we've accomplished this year, starting with the superintendent hire and all that that we've done in this time. But in terms of what we could do, I think we need to be very planful and know for sure what our responsibilities are at the beginning of the year so that we don't have a June where a committee that's worked great together, it gets a little bumpy.
Yep.
And, and the other thing that I think about is maybe we could agree as a committee what our priorities are for agendas, so that when we're making agendas, things that we've already preset and agreed can, can fall off or we can find more efficient ways to deal with them.
Sarah?
Yeah, my turn. Yeah, thank you. So I was at the retreat last year and I actually found it awkward to be trying to comment, like making comments on two committees at once. Because they operate, it's, it's not totally different personalities, but different leadership and somewhat different agendas or priorities. So I would rather not have to wear two hats at once, but, but I don't want, you know, to multiply meetings, but maybe Amherst could meet for an hour or hour and a half before a regional retreat. And then I can take one hat off and put another one on. But I would, I, chairs could consider not only having a discussion about or the self-evaluation and how we work together and how we can work better together, but also the long-range planning. but also the long-range planning for the year. I mean, there are draft calendars now which should help the chairs see what's coming, but, um, but the different committees may have their own, they should, their own priorities for their districts and maybe want to have some time to talk about that, so.
Great, thank you. Irv, did you have any comments you wanted to make this time?
I think that's a great idea, but I also think that we need, that was a really powerful comment. Anyway, um, I would, I would like to think that there are commonalities across the committees. And we work on, we set up this retreat to deal with the issues common to all of the committees and then separate out and at some point in relationship to those are unique to, uh, the other, um, school committees. But it's the commonalities that I would like to emphasize, uh, first and then separate it out at some point to those that are unique to other, only other school committees.
Thank you. Deb, did you have anything you, at this, at this point?
Well, I wanted to ditto what, what Bridget said, but also, um, uh, June's been a rough month, I think in terms of smoothness of operation. And I, I actually had a call with Tracy Novak, um, kind of asking her for some guidance on some of the sticky points this month. And she said that, um, MASC could, if we wanted to structure something, um, they could help us create a context or a framework. Maybe we want a facilitator, maybe we wouldn't. But the things she was just throwing out there that we might want to consider, I have a list of and I can send them to you.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, um, and, and I have an idea for, like, presentations that I'd like to float, so I'll, I'll send that all to you.
Excellent, thank you.
Could, could I ask that you send it to me as well, Deb?
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
Oh, is that deliberation? Can I just-
No, 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 it's not.
It's only three of us.
Oh, and then Margaret.
Yep.
But the four of us are not a quorum of anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Jen, Jennifer, Margaret, Sarah Bass, got it?
Yep, thank you. All set? Anna?
So the only thing that I would add is goals for the, for the school committees or school committee. So part of the self-evaluation is whether you're meeting your goals and we don't have any goals. So I would like to maybe set some goals.
Set some goals? Okay, great, thank you. Yes, now I'm turning this way. William?
I was gonna say the same thing Anna did, uh, just working on setting our goals and working on a self-evaluation of how effective we were and maybe some of our goals could be how to improve our effectiveness.
Great.
If we deem we weren't effective, but maybe we were so effective, we don't need to set goals.
Dr. Z?
Thank you. I feel like I'm a part of the committee, so I get to vote on the retreat. I like to ditto what everyone, what everyone said. And then I want to add in there to, like, work the superintendent and creating my goals. Like, once your goals are, are created, then having, because in actuality, I am your implementer in terms of the working of the district. I'm the person that you hired to, to execute. And so, once your goals are created, then creating my goals as well, so we could do that. And then also, just how do we function, communicate, and work together as a community and a superintendent? So I'm meeting that expectation around, you know, what does it look like, you know, get, school committee meetings? How can I help for them to flow quicker and move, move forward? And what, what is my, how does my role probably impede some of the things that occur? So I, I would like to be those things to come forth.
Thank you. Okay, anything further, uh, Jennifer, you wanted to mention?
No, thank you.
Okay. We're not adjourned to Pelham, it's the region, okay. So next is our summative evaluation for our superintendent. So as a brief overview, each individual committee member evaluated Dr. Z based on four standards of instructional leadership, management and operations, family engagement, family and community engagement, and professional cultures, each with multiple indicators as set by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. These standards and indicators are rated on a scale of unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. In addition, with the committee, Dr. Z set four goals of strategic planning and budget alignment, operational efficiencies, data management and equity, and healing and stabilizing the district, and professional cultural and operational systems and conflict resolutions. As outlined in Dr. Z's contract, she received, uh, individual committee members' evaluations. Additionally, as stipulated in the contract, each individual member is invited and encouraged to set a meeting with Dr. Z to discuss ratings and comments. And at this time, the committee would like to thank Dr. Z for her hard work and dedication to our district and our continued support of our students, educators, community, and family. And we look forward to creating a healthy and sustainable district together. The summative report is attached. Are there any, um, final comments anyone would like to make? Go ahead, Deb.
Yeah, um, I had a really hard time with the evaluation. I felt like you were, given the structure that we're dealing with, with the goals and the standards and the indicators and the evidence, there's no space for keeping the wheels on and dealing with, like, emergencies that come up. All the kinds of things that are probably a large part of your day wasn't built into that framework. And I don't, I think we can work on that for goals going forward. But I just wanted to say that thank you for all the non-standards work that you've done, all the, just everything else that goes beyond these high-level things, the operations of the district, which is hard to find in that structure.
That means a lot, Deb, thank you.
I just wanna remind everyone that, um, as a first-year superintendent, a rating of needs improvement is not that you're not doing a good enough job. It's really a rating of there's still a lot of work to be done and we're just getting started. And so I think that if you look at people who rated you as needs improvement, they're not saying that you aren't doing a good job. Often it is really that there's still a lot of work to be done and we're going to get there. And I don't, you know, that nobody said anything about being unsatisfactory, I think is excellence, good progress. But I think that you shouldn't feel offended by people who rated you as needs improvement because it's not saying that you're not doing a good job, it's just saying that there's still a lot of work to be done. Put that out there.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna. I think for me, feedback is valuable. It, the only thing that I can do is grow. Um, and so it's really to take the feedback, work with my coach, and kinda, you know, delve into how do we grow, what next steps to move forward? And just again, like I said, keep the district pushing forward. So I, I look at it as opportunities for growth for myself. And more so, once I grow, the system grows, hopefully, and, uh, because we're gonna grow together. Because some of this work is work that has to be completed as a team.
Uh, Sarah?
I, I did want to make sure to, that all the people doing, that you are not doing this work alone. And then I extend my thanks and gratitude to all, all the people, administrators, educators, everybody who, who brought our children through this year. A lot was done, a lot remains to be done. The, your goals are very ambitious and there was no way they could be done in one year. So, so it's great that you have, um, that you have so many goals. Maybe you were gonna need fewer goals, I don't know, we'll see, but-
We will.
Yeah, okay.
Anything further? Okay. I move to approve the summative evaluation as presented.
Second, Jennifer.
Roll call out because we have remote participants. Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Sarah Bass, yes, and William?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now we will talk about the Amherst, um, summative evaluation. You'll see that the format is very similar to the regional one. I wanted to, I wanted to share a few thoughts and I want to point out a few nuggets. First, um, I, you know, there's fewer of us than on the region. There's, there's five of us and not every member gave, um, verbatim comments or gave comments for every question. So I included all of the comments that were given in the report. And in writing the report, I didn't editorialize or try to summarize, uh, key findings or anything from any, any area because there were, there were places where committee members disagreed, sometimes on opposite ends of the spectrum. And I didn't want to, uh, include any of my own, I don't know, bias or summarizing and have one person feel that they weren't represented or one person felt, feel left out. So, and the report is just the number of, um, the number of ratings at each area that each school committee member gave. I will say that, a-again, there were, there were some areas where committee members agreed on the performance of the, of the superintendent in that area and some where we, we were very, very different. And I think that's great. And I think that's democracy and I think that's each of us having our own opinion and perspective. I, I do just want to point out one area that we, uh, one area that we all did agree on. Well, there were many areas that we all agreed the, the superintendent was proficient, such as, um, many, many of the family and community engagement items as well as, um, just wanted to point out one other one. Curriculum, um, data-informed decision-making, student learning, we all agreed that the superintendent was proficient. But there was one area where all five Amherst committee members agreed that the superintendent needs improvement and that's on managing conflict. And I think, again, as Anna said, that doesn't mean you're not doing a good job. It just means we, we could, we, we all agree that there could be some improvement in that area. And overall, for the overall rating, um, four of the five members rated the superintendent proficient and one needs improvement. So again, I echo what Sarah Bass said about thanking the superintendent for your performance and for your heart and for your work and time and energy this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from Amherst folks?
Yes.
Go ahead, Irv.
I once sat in the room with a group of superintendents in my first year as being a, uh, school committee member. And this is, was one of the, um, conferences. And every one of them said to a person, they hated the process, the evaluation process. Hated with a passion because of the indicators, the artifacts, et cetera, et cetera. And that they wished that it could be transformed in some, some way. And that was 10 years ago.
So noted. I move for Amherst that we approve the summative evaluation of the superintendent.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Um, Jennifer votes yes, Bridget?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Thank you, passes unanimously.
So I like to thank the committees. It was a, it was a year, like I said in my opening, but it's also humbling and for me, reassuring that, I wasn't surprised. But I know that it off, it allows us to go up from here. And so there, there's work to be done and it's only improvements. So I'm, I'm grateful and I just, I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have any gifts. I don't think there's any for Amherst. I don't see any attached.
No.
We don't have any, oh, let's see. Are there any school committee announcements or updates?
Is that the meeting on Thursday?
Oh, the, okay, okay.
On Thursday, we are, um, I don't know if Deb or I are attending, one of us is attending, a meeting of, um, with the state senator to push further for charter school funds for the district. And, um, and it seems like this is a, this is a very important, um, person to meet with because they hold some sway and sway in the district and, so that I don't butcher the last name.
Dee Domenico.
Dee Domenico, thank you. Yeah, I'm senator, so, um, wish us luck.
You got this.
This is for, this is for reimbursement?
It's for, it's to ask for charter school reimbursement to the district. And I would just say that, um, that Deb has put together some amazing data and spreadsheets and graphs that really show how much, especially from 2013 to now, how much we have lost comparatively to charter schools in terms of our, our reimbursements, the numbers we get. I think we can make a really strong case in that meeting.
Great, thank you both.
Would you just say what subcommittee that's for?
That's fiscal sustainability subcommittee.
Thank you.
Great.
I have one. Yeah, it's not really, it's just a glimmer. MASC did a learning lunch that I attended the last 20 minutes of, um, about, I see a nod. There's a state initiative to rewrite the laws around regional schools that will impact our regional agreement. And it will also, like, I, it just got a glimmer of it and I dived into data instead of diving into this. So I don't really know what it's about, but there seem to be some pretty high-level concerns about, um, taking financial power further away from the towns and further away from the committees. So, um, pay attention, stay tuned, and I'll try to see if I can dig up some more information. It, it should get posted on the MASC learning lunch, you know, they post them all afterwards.
Oh, you mean the videos?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, um, I don't have a chair's update or any subcommittee announcements.
Okay, excellent. I do not have a chair's update either. I would like for us to take a five-minute recess and thank Dr. Z for her-
Thank you.
-joining us tonight. And we will be back at 8:15. And we will be back at 8:15.
So you're going.
Sorry, I'm just waiting to get the thumbs up. Thank you. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item, discussion of actions taken by member Irv Rhodes. So I want to start by saying that we may mention a specific district employee in our discussions tonight, but we will not refer to this person by name or gender. We'll just refer to them as they or the employee, for, for any, for any district employee in order to protect their privacy. And also, we will not interrupt others while they're speaking. We will allow each person to, to speak without interrupting anyone. So what I thought we would do is, I'm going to briefly state the facts as I see them. And then I'm going to invite Irv to speak and then we can have a committee discussion. Does that sound okay? Okay. So here's a statement of what I, what I and Sarah Bass see as the facts. So Sarah Bass and I were noted, notified of several instances of concern regarding AMERST and regional school committee member Irv Rhodes. The first was Irv arranging to visit one of our elementary schools without first notifying the superintendent. This runs counter to policy BHC, which states that individual school committee members interested in visiting schools or classrooms will first inform the superintendent and then make arrangements for visitations. The second was that the APEA president informed the school committee members on the management bargaining team that Irv had contacted her and made a suggestion for what AP, for what APEA should accept when it comes to cost of living increases in the current round of contract bargaining. According to her, he said that APEA should quote "sacrifice", and he spoke confidently that the town of AMERST and the AMERST town manager would agree. The third was that Irv contacted the former employer of a district employee and asked about their work schedule. This employee was a Realtor and still appeared to be an active agent, according to the agency's website. The person he spoke to provided a screenshot of the caller ID of this phone call showing Irv's spouse's name and Irv's phone number and a summary of the call to the employee who forwarded it to Dr. Z, who forwarded it to Sarah Bass and me. And the fourth is that Irv contacted this, called this employee directly. The reason for the call was unknown until Irv sent an email to this employee and CC'd to the regional school committee, letting this person know that he contacted them and to urge them to sever ties with the realty agency. When these instances were brought to our attention, Sarah and I, Sarah Bass and I discovered what, if anything, to do. We decided that the first step should be to speak to Irv directly and let him know that these actions were not appropriate, listen to his response, and hope that we could all come to agreement on what was and was not appropriate for school committee members. At this meeting, Sarah Bass and I started to describe the four instances that I have just described. According to our memory, Irv did not deny that he had done these things, but he did refute that they did not comply with school committee policies. He also said that he would not change his behavior. And he said he wanted us to bring him in front of the committees. As we were continuing, continuing to describe the instances, he ended the meeting and left the room. After the meeting, Sarah Bass and I again discussed what, if anything, to do. We decided that at the next joint meeting, a previous meeting to this one, we would ask the school committees if members wanted to discuss this in a meeting of the full committees. We heard from two members at the meeting that they wanted to discuss it at a future meeting and we heard the same from another member after the meeting. We also read in two of Irv's, Irv's subsequent emails to the regional school committee that he wanted this brought up at a full meeting of the full committees. We then let Irv know that per his request, we would put this on the agenda for tonight's meeting and asked if he would like to have it in open session or executive session and that either one would be fine with both of, both of us. And he replied that he wanted to have it in open session. And that's what brings us here tonight. So that's a statement of the facts as I see them. Irv, I want to invite you to speak.
Yep. First, it's like everything else, no matter how thin the pancake, there are always two sides. So I appreciate the sides that you just presented. And I would like to go over there as one by one, if you don't mind, Jennifer, so that we can thoroughly explore all of these. The other thing is that it's, it is, it was and is my intention to have these discussions because the policies that are in, that are in action, that are effective and in action, sometimes contradict each other. And what policy takes precedent over another policy is not clear, which I'll go through tonight. So in order to save time, Jennifer, if you go through the first incident and, 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 and the other, yeah, go through the first one because, and then we get back to the phone call to the other person, whatever, and then we'll go through it, but go through it one by one.
Okay. The first was arranging to visit one of our elementary schools without first notifying the superintendent.
All right. You know, if, I, I've sent all of you the letters that have happened. I, what I did was I first contacted Derek, who is the principal of Crocker Farm. And I said, you know, time has been passing and it's almost end of the year. And I said, it would be really good if I could visit with him at some point in time, which I then, and I, in that email, I CC'd Dr. Z, and that's a matter of record. So Derek got back and said, well, we would like to do it on Monday. And, and again, he CC'd Dr. Z on that. I got back to him and said, nope, I can't do that, but let's look at Thursday. Again, all of, all of those remarks went back and were CC'd to Dr. Z. We finally decided up on Thursday, that again, when it was set, was CC'd to Dr. Z. After the meeting, I made comments back to them and all of those things were CC'd to Dr. Z. So what I don't understand is how did that violate that particular policy? It's for you, Jennifer, you and Sarah Bass said that I did, so.
So the, the order of operations, according to the policy, is first notify the superintendent. And I, I don't think it's a gray area or unclear at all that CCing the superintendent concurrently with requesting a request, requesting a visit is not first notifying the superintendent. And I think the reason that the policy says first notice, notify the superintendent is because the superintendent is in the best position to let you know if there's something going on in the district that day or if there's, or what would be a, what would be a good, a good day to visit. Also, the superintendent might have said, hey, Irv, maybe you want to visit all three elementary schools and not just, not just one of them. So I, I mean, for, th, th, those are just, you know, my thoughts, but the policy seems clear that first notifying the superintendent is not complied with by CCing the superintendent concurrent. I will say though, since I have the microphone, that of the, of the four instances that I described, I find this one to be the least egregious and I'm perfectly fine with dropping it so that we can talk about the other three.
What is frustrating about this to me is that there's nothing in the, in, in, in any of this that says that, you know, in the policies, it says that CCing is not acceptable. There's nothing. It says notification. Now, why isn't CCing a notification? All right? But so it's, it, it's an absurdity to me. And, and the other, the other thing is, all of these, all of these, all of these things, if we really want to be together, if we really want to work as a team, as if, and if we really value each other, if we really respect each other, then it would seem to me, if all those things were operative, that Sarah Bass and Jennifer could have lived up to their word when they, when they sent the letter to me that says there have been no charges issued against you as we are all equals in the school committee. Even the chairs do not have the authority to bring charges or find other members guilty of anything. We are asking for this meeting to have a discussion amongst the three of us. We have been informed that you have engaged in actions that are, that go against our policy BHC. And we want to discuss this with you so that we are all on the same page moving forward. That was a great statement. This letter was a great statement. I appreciated that because I thought, so I said, all right, we're going to get in this meeting and we're going to discuss our differences and we're going to come out of there with some agreement. And I was all for that. But when I get to the meeting and you came at me with prepared statements and then more than that, you indicated that you, that you contacted the attorney in terms of how this meeting should be, should go, in terms of guidance. That indicated to me a total lack of trust. It also violated the principles in the letter and the spirit of the letter. So I felt betrayed by you, Jennifer, and by Sarah Bass when I walked into that room. It was not supposed to be a confrontational thing, according to your letter. But it became that. And I, once I understood that, this meeting lasted, by the way, for all of you, every bit of five minutes because I left. I did not wish to be there. And so all I'm saying is that if it's, if it's, look at it in, in a way of, how do you, how do you wish to be treated as a human being? Do you wish to be treated in a way that people don't mean what they say and don't say what they mean? Do you wish to be treated by people in a fair and honest and open way? This was not fair and it was not honest. This all could have been settled right in that room. We could have had a great decent discussion. But the way you came at me was incredibly, not only, you, you don't understand. When you did that, it was like you broke a code. You, you broke a code. To me, you broke a code.
Sarah Bass?
Yep. So I was the one that, while I did have a conversation, which was maybe two seconds with our counsel, was because we were at, we were already at a meeting together for union negotiations. And these three incidences had been brought to our attention. And I asked, what, what do we do with this? And his suggestion was have a conversation, which was what we tried to do on June 6th. It was after the conversation on June 6th, when it was asked if we had talked to the lawyer, which we responded yes to. So it wasn't at the meeting that we had a conversation about having talked to a lawyer. And, and the conversation was, we have, these three things have come to our attention, how do we handle it? And the answer was have a conversation with your member, which was the, the meeting we tried to, we scheduled for the 6th.
Thank you. I'll also say that the, you know, it was Mark Terry, the attorney. Mark Terry's job is to make sure we do things that comply with the law, to make sure that we're not doing anything that doesn't comply with the law. So it wasn't about asking him how we should, I got you, Irv. It wasn't about asking him, how can we get Irv? It was more like, we want to make sure that we're doing things appropriately. What, what do you think we should do? And his suggestion, as Sarah Bass was, to do the thing we had already decided to do, but hadn't put into, put into process yet, which was to have a meeting. It's curious to me that, that, that I, that we're being called out for reading a statement because I find that to be a very respectful way of communicating with someone. In fact, everyone has their own communication style and mine is that when I have something important to say, especially when I can plan ahead, I write it down to make sure I don't miss anything I want to say and don't misspeak, like I'm doing right now, just to make sure that I'm using everyone's time efficiently and being as respectful as I can. There's nothing untoward or inappropriate or aggressive about being prepared and wanting to be careful with your words. I see it as a way to make sure that I communicate clearly. And when, when Irv or anyone says things to me that are insulting, like not fair and not honest, he's also used disrespectful, demeaning, and dishonorable. It doesn't, I wrote this down too, just wanted to make sure that I say it correctly. It doesn't, it doesn't bother me because I know that I'm comfortable and confident in my own integrity. I acted in a respectful and professional manner with a school committee peer. So when words are used against me like that, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me because I know that my actions align with my values and I, I know that I acted professionally and respectfully. Irv?
You know, you know, it's remarkable to me. If you had contacted the attorney for, you know, just to make sure everything was whatever in order, you know, we're having this conversation tonight, did you contact the attorney to make sure everything was in order, et cetera? If we were sitting down outside of this, would you contact the attorney? Why was it so important for you to contact the attorney if we're just having an informal conversation? That is really ridiculous for you to say, well, we just did it because we wanted out of the abundance a caution. Caution about what? Having a normal conversation about something? That doesn't make sense, Jennifer. It doesn't make sense. And no person listening to this would accept that as making sense. And that, you know, it would be something like, you know, us coming together here or us going to a retreat and someone said, we need to have the attorney come. We need to make sure we have this meeting in a, in a certain way. If it's going to be a conversation that's informal between us, then why involve the attorney? It is, it's just not fair. It isn't fair. And let me tell you something else, one thing else. You know, just because something is legal does not make it right. It isn't right. Couple of examples. Women have not having to vote was legal, but it wasn't right. Slavery was legal, but it wasn't right. All right? Just because something is legal does not make it right. Right is determined by the people who are carrying out the actions. That's what right is. It's because you have some kind of code of honor, some moral compass that tells you the difference between right and wrong. An attorney doesn't tell you the difference between right and wrong. If I, upon entering that room, then when you, when you said to me that you're, that you had an attorney, my first inclination was, was that I was really angry. my first inclination was, was that I was really angry and I let that pass because if I really took it very seriously, I would immediately contacted my attorney and said, "Hey, here's what happened. You tell me what my options are." Alright, because what I felt from you two, that I was being entrapped. When you start reading, I felt that I was entrapped. This was, this was entrapment in my, in my mind. That's when I was angry. When I calmed down and I thought, "This is being done by people who don't respect me, don't like me for whatever reasons, but if they really respected me and liked me and we were really working on a common thing, there would have never been an attorney involved." Alright, so one of the things I want to just say towards, in terms of all of the other allegations about me being outside of the, the policies. Policy B, B E, BED, BED, is under section B, School Committee Governance and Operations. One section reads, "Committee members may consult with individuals or groups of district employees for the purpose of receiving information and opinions. Such consultations may be public or private." As BED. Alright, the other one. None of these provisions is intended to limit the right and responsibility of individual members to voice personal views on issues relating to the school districts, to inform themselves as fully as possible on all issues coming before the school committee, or to share information with the superintendent and other members of the committee. Policy BBAA, under School Committee Governance and Operations. Now, all of those policies indicate that I didn't violate anything, that I was operating within the scope of the policies present for me, for me and others to follow. You chose one specific policy as an overriding policy and that policy is not overriding. I think that the overriding policy is policy BBAA. And that is, none of these provisions is intended to limit the right and responsibility of individual members to voice personal, personal views on issues related to the school district, to inform themselves as fully as possible on all issues coming before the school committees, or to share information with the superintendent and other members of the committees.
William?
Hi, I was getting a little lost when Irv was quoting some policies there because I'm having a hard time finding them. But my original comment was on policy BHC, where it clearly states, "The school committee wishes to maintain open channels of communication between itself and staff. The basic line of communication will however be through the superintendent." And in my opinion, on that first incident, it wasn't, the initial communication was not through the superintendent. The superintendent was CC'd. And so I think it was in line for the chairs to have a conversation with you, Irv, about how this policy is in effect and you were not abiding by that policy. So I'm sorry to convince you of that, but I, I do support what our chairs did and I feel like that policy BHC clearly states that we are supposed to have our communication through the superintendent prior to talking to the staff members. If she gives us, if they give us permission, then we can have those conversations with staff members.
But we do not need permission from her. This is not about, this, this policy is not about gaining permission. We do not need permission from her.
We have to communicate through her originally. And I believe that we set up in our last, in the very beginning of the year when we had our last retreat, I really do recall us saying that we would communicate and go through the superintendent.
I have a queue going, Irv, would you like to be back in the queue?
Yeah, but if, if I am the one being...
Yes, but other members haven't spoken yet. I'll put you in the queue after Sarah and Deb. Sarah?
Couple of things. So I, I get the sense from these descriptions of the meeting that Irv felt he walked into something far more formal and structured than maybe he was, than he was expecting. And so I, I have some sympathy to your perception of the event. But in any case, the, about these various alleged infractions, I have a lot of problems with this policy BHC. I have violated it. In fact, any of us who've, who've visited schools in the last year and a half, because that's the time I know about, none of us got permissions from our school committees, which I think is ridiculous. So I would like to send that to the policy committee and I have a lot of thoughts. But, but I, but about the other allegations, I, I, I would think about them or wish to have a discussion. Not so much about the legalistic, this policy, that policy, because we have a lot of policies and some seem to be at cross purposes, but more about whether this, you know, a, a certain conversation was helpful to, to, let's say, to the APEA negotiations was going, going, you know, investigating the background of an employee, like how is that going to come across to the employee? Or does that, you know, that's a responsibility of human resources? I would talk about it more and like, if you have this concern, here's, here's what I would have suggested. Did you not go call the, call the Realtor or the, whatever that was? You talk to the superintendent, say, "Can I talk to the human resources person?" or whatever. But instead of, so that we don't get caught up in this policy or that and did I do this, that. But just about the, the, the results or the possible misinterpretations that could have occurred by having the conversations you did and just what might be better ways of, of pursuing those concerns. I mean, they're all, they're all, you know, I'm not saying your questions or whatever you were doing was, were not, weren't worth getting answers to, but I would have recommended or discussed, you know, better, better ways of addressing them.
Thank you, Sarah. I have Deb, then Irv, Bridgette, and then me.
Yeah, I have, I violate this policy all the time. And I had a conversation with William when this first came up and he informed me that if I see a teacher or a staff member in the supermarket after hours, I can't say, or it would be, and William, tell me if I'm misrepresenting what you said. Your interpretation of it was, "I can't say. How are things going?" I can say, "I hope things are going well." So I have questions about BHC, especially regarding the fact that I think one of my strengths is being a trusted member, a longstanding trusted member of the school community. And it's, it, it has felt really uncomfortable for me in the context of this conversation as well as some email exchanges that took place for me to understand where I land now. I certainly don't want to put anybody in an awkward position and I don't know now what is okay to do and not okay to do. And I think when we discussed this in, when we were setting the agenda, I said as much. I, I, I don't like the fact that Irv was singled out when many of us self-admit to having, having violated this policy. And I think it's much more constructive for it to be an us thing than a you thing. I mean, you all do you, but I, I didn't see the relevance of, I, I, I didn't like how this agenda item was listed. I thought some of the emails were unnecessary and felt like, the attachments to board doc felt like it was just kind of not connected with the issues that you were bringing in front of us, but the conversation subsequent to it. So I, I, I didn't really know what that was about. And just the, there's no interrupting. I mean, I know we have a history and it's been a tough month, but that also set the tone of kind of a more confrontational, rather than collaborative, conversation, presuming that Irv was going to interrupt when you, when you, when you framed it that way. Because we've never had those kinds of statements in front of conversations that I recall in school committees. So I, I get it and I look forward to bringing this forward in policy. But I, I, I didn't, this is, this doesn't feel good. This doesn't feel good because of what we've done so far this year and it doesn't feel good that this is how we're ending a really difficult and productive year where I think I've learned to see the strengths in everyone. I want to say, you know, originally, my image of the people I serve on the community with was entirely different than it turned out to be. And I love that. I love that I don't make up my mind ahead of time when I come to school committee because I feel like everybody has their own strengths. Anna has her kind of, this is how I see things in, in policy. William's always, you know, looking at the policy structure. Jennifer does say things, articulate things very clearly by writing things down ahead of time. I want Bridgette to take the meeting on Thursday because she's just weaves a narrative in a way that Dr. Z can, but I cannot. Sarah's like in there with the details. Tim?
You can pass.
I don't know that well yet. Tillman always called, always called the time.
I'm not Tillman.
You're not Tillman, but you know, you're taking notes. Maybe you're doing the minutes. That's a good thing. So I just feel like what Bridgette said, we're better together than we are apart, all of us. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Deb. Irv?
I, I just want to make sure we go through each of these because there are things that you said that were totally, and not true and false in terms of what you, so I want to go through these ones, one by one, because I don't want those to stand as part of the record without being challenged. Alright, so the other thing is that the spirit of the policies in terms of the school committee and how we are to behave and what our functions are and what, how we interact with the public speaks very clearly to what we can do. And, and for, and I'm assuming William didn't say this, that we, if a person in the community asks us what's happening or what's going on, that we couldn't say something, or if a school commit, we met a school member in the community and we said, "What's going on?" and they started to say that, we couldn't say that. We couldn't speak. That is not true. And it, it, because each of us are representatives of this committee in one way or another. If we say that, "Hey, when we're talking to you, this is our opinion and our opinion only and it's representative of me, of one, and not of the school committee", we can talk, but to say that we can't is like a dereliction of our duty. It's, it's like an insult to our constituents. You know, they, they put us here. They elected us to be their representatives. And be, to say that we're not able to speak is antithetical to that role. So I'm assuming in, in terms of, of, of that first policy and my violation thereof, I am submitting that, that, that the spirit of the policy was followed by me. The spirit of the policy is followed by others. To use some minute detail, like you really should have said to Dr. Z, "Hey, I am at some point going to go to Crocker Farm, I'm not sure, but I'm going to do that." That would be sufficient. And then go and make the arrangements. But CCing at the same time, which I thought was really good because the policy definitely does not say that CCing is not notification. There's nothing in the policy that says that. And the other thing is, policy is only as good as those people who is meant, that is meant to follow it. And it should represent the intent to do something that is in order. But being, you know, getting down to minutia of a policy, like the way you were stating it, that I didn't first say, "Hey, Dr. Z", that I only CCed is, it's sort of so, I don't know, it's like, to me, and I heard it, I thought, "My God, this shouldn't even be a topic of conversation." That it is, is amazing to me. So anyway, the next item.
Oh, good thing I wrote them down.
Yes.
The second was that the APEA president informed the school committee members on the management bargaining team that Irv had contacted her, I'm saying her because this is a person who's known, and made a suggestion for what APEA should accept when it comes to cost of living increases. According to her, he said the APEA should sacrifice and he spoke confidently that the town of Amherst and the Amherst Town Manager would agree.
Who did I say that to?
The...
I didn't say that to me. I didn't say anything about the town, town manager. Who reported that?
The current, active at the time, president of the APEA. So we can go back and forth about what you said and what, what she said you said, but that's, she's not here to defend herself. So why don't you tell us what you told her?
Well, here's, here's the thing is, since she's here not to defend herself and that she said and I said is, would be a matter of differences, why would you take that as a, a something that is factual?
Okay, so why don't you correct us?
No, I'm going to ask the question, why is it factual? If the conversation and the results of the conversation were, would be, would be different?
Okay, so perhaps I misspoke when I mentioned hearsay, what someone said, someone said. But we were informed that you contacted the APEA president and talked about contract bargaining. Do you want to clarify, Sarah Best?
Yes, because I had that conversation and, and so those were the points that she relayed to me that, hold on, let me...
What I want to know is, what exactly did she say?
She said...
What Jennifer just said.
You made a suggestion for what APEA should accept when it comes to cost of living increases. And you said the APEA should sacrifice and you spoke confidently that the town of Amherst and the Amherst Town Manager would agree. This was reported to us.
That's, and that, that report is false. About one quarter of that is true. The other is false.
Okay.
And, and, but wait a minute. Not only that, she mentioned the town manager, that I mentioned the town manager. That, that is false also. Alright, and for it to take that as, well, that's obviously true because she said it. Alright? Irv said something different, so that must not be true.
No one's saying that. Why don't you tell us what you told her?
Well, here's what I said to her and I'm going to try to get it correctly. I said, I called her, called her, identified myself and I said, "I am, this is off the record. I'm speaking strictly as Irv Rhodes. And if this was alright with her, if it wasn't alright, just hang up, we'll go away." She said, "No, go ahead and say what you need to say." Alright, so I said to her again, I made sure before I said what I said. So I said, "You know, I said, 'You know, if the union took no raises, no COLAs, etc., and we then asked the town council to pass a budget at 5% and I made, I made specific 5%, which was the target that I was, and mine was going, that you realize that if we did that, that the cuts that would happen would be very, very minimal in terms of the impact on the union." That was it. And, and I, and she said, "Well, I don't know if I can do that." And I said, "It's fine. It just, this was something I wanted to ask. Again, this is off the record, etc. That's it."
So Bridgette, I've got you in the queue next, but I just want to respond to that and say that that type of side conversation during an active and say that that type of side conversation during an active period of contract negotiations is, can be deeply damaging to the process. That's known as back channeling. And it can be a useful tool when it's agreed to by the management representatives of the school district and the union. But that type of side conversation could have been very damaging. And, and that, starting with this incident is the one, are the ones that I think deserve the most discussion and coming to a, a group understanding about what is and isn't appropriate. I know, you know this, Irv, because I know you've been involved on the school committee for many years and have seen many contract negotiations. The, the side conversation was, could have been very damaging to our position in contract negotiations.
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. So it's like could've, would've, should've. It didn't occur. What I'm saying is, not, you said something could have occurred, could have been, could have been considered back channeling. It didn't occur. That's the reality. All right? And the reality is that she did not bring it up, did not with the union, did not bring it up with us in terms of back channeling everything you're talking about. She didn't bring it up, up at union. All right? The reason the union person didn't bring it up, Jennifer, is something all of us should recognize, that when she accepted that I was talking as myself, and, and it was off the record, she accepted that. So for two, for her to have broken that, she would have broken her honor. Because she had said to me that it was all right to talk. So for you to say, oh, well, it was terrible. I mean, she could have, we could have been, uh, subject to back, back channeling, et cetera. Well, we, nothing occurred. It didn't, it didn't occur. And by the way, policies do allow me to do exactly what I did. There are policies that allow me to do that, and I read them to you.
I have Bridgette...
You can add me to the end.
Tim, Anna, and then William, and then Sarah Besse. Bridgette?
Oh, well, I want to say first that I just objected in general, and like, I've been clear with everybody behind the scenes, so nobody's be surprised by what I say. So to putting this under the name of one particular person, because one thing that I'd heard for the last couple of weeks was like, oh, so-and-so reached out to me and said, I was violating BHE. Oh, me too. And I know from my own experience that when we had a previous superintendent, I'd say, oh, I want to go to school X, or I'm going to go. And he'd say, oh, just CC me when you include the principal. And there are similar things that now are being interpreted a certain way, but we're definitely in past practice, because even today, this week, something came up and I realized, oh, from what they're saying about BHE, I'm in violation. Because normally when I want something posted, I just used to send it to Debbie, and now I send it to Seth. And it's supposed to go through the superintendent according to this policy. Then I also agree with Irv, that the policies are in conflict with each other. I see BED, which I want to point out, also says meetings should be terminated by 10:00 PM. BED. But it also does state what he said, that committee members may meet with individuals or groups who work in the district. And it doesn't have the same things as that. And let's be honest, none of us knows every one of these policies inside and out. Look at how many letters and numbers and things there are attached. So I think it would have been better to have a agenda item that didn't focus on one person per se, but said these particular items were things that we needed to clarify and come together. And maybe even policy could come together with some understandings and get our feedback or whatever. But that being said, I don't think the first one is a big deal at all. But when I heard about the second two, I had concerns. We're negotiating with the union, it's been going tremendously well, right? And for Irv to go to them and say, we don't think you should take a raise at all, no COLA, that will, that will be better, that really breaks down the goodwill that the folks who are, and dismisses the leadership of the folks who are going forward and doing this work and spending many, many, many hours of time working on, to throw in an idea that has already been mentioned to this committee and nobody else agreed with. So I, I just felt like, okay, that's, I agree with Jennifer. That's really destructive to the process of what we're trying to build and the relationships that we're trying to repair that had been really fractured in the past. And honestly, the thing with the employee, it felt really transgressive to me to be tracking down, calling up, and then calling the employee. We all know the chain of command, and that should have just went straight to Dr. Z. I can understand Irv's concerns, saying, oh, does this person work full-time somewhere else too? And then, et cetera. But those are things, that's what Dr. Z is for. She's their boss. So I just feel like, all that, and one other thing, like calling, like talking to the attorney without letting him know, like, oh, I've talked to legal counsel, that doesn't seem great either. So like, when I heard it all, I was a little bit annoyed with everybody, you know, including myself. Because I don't even know, like, these policies conflict with each other. They're not clear. And some of them frankly get in the way of the things that help me do a great job as a school committee member, which is exactly that. When I'm on the sidelines somewhere, when I'm bumping into people in public, when my relationships in the schools inform me of what's going on in the schools. And I would, why would I continue to serve if I couldn't bring that knowledge to the table?
One, one thing. In terms of the union person, it is, timing and when it took place is very important. When that, when I did contact this person, the time of it is really important. And no one has said, well, if the assumption was, it's like what you just said, Bridgette, it was in the middle of the heat of negotiations. It was really at the way, beginning of negotiations. It wasn't in the middle or something. It's at the very, almost at the very beginning. And that's important.
Tim?
Something I've heard Sarah say, and Jennifer, probably others, but, but I, I heard it from the two of you most clearly. Intentions are important. I also, I think I want to talk about impacts for just a moment. I would say that incident number one, it seems like the impact is vanishingly small. Incident number two had a potential impact, and maybe it did have an impact. I don't know that it's been demonstrated either way, whether this impacted negotiations. It may have. And that is concerning to me. I think, though, what's clearer or more evident is that the members of the committee who are in the role of negotiating with the APA, I, I think having heard that a committee member reached out in this way, in that manner, would have been, must have been very unsettling. Like, oh my God, what are we going to do? What can we do? What? Uh, so I just want to appreciate that that had to be very difficult to receive and then understand, I've got to do something about this. I don't know what. I also think that were I in your position, Jennifer and Sarah Besse, I would have talked with town council. I think that the way I might have approached the meeting with Irv is to just, if I had a prepared statement, I would have kept it in my bag, and I might have just started the conversation by saying, Irv, this is what we heard happened. Can you tell us more about that? And then spend a good amount of time listening before switching over to the prepared statement. And I think that that is clearly something that impacted Irv negatively, and I can appreciate that. I also want to think about how it must have felt to be an employee of the district and to learn that a committee member had called the Realty Office for which I work. And I think that that had to have been very distressing. And, and I would say that I personally, I want to be, I want to be on a school committee that employees feel safe with, emotionally and professionally safe. And I think that's all I really have to say, except that I, I would really like, yes, to reconcile some policies, and we have a subcommittee to do that, and they should look at some of this stuff and find out if there are contradictions, iron them out and so forth. But I, I would like to steer some of the energy towards what I think Deb was creating a bit of a framework for, which is repair and reconciliation. I think that there's a lot of emotional energy that got tangled up in policy dialogue. And I think we need to figure out how to now de-escalate, repair, and figure out how to turn this into collaboration out of conflict.
Thank you, Tim. I have Anna, William, Sarah Besse, me, and then, do you want to go back in the queue, Irv?
I want to make sure we continue on the schedule of talking and also...
Okay, I'll put you before me.
But, but here's, here's the thing that's disturbing to me, is that people get to say things and I can't say, hey, that's not true.
All right. Why don't we have you respond before we go to the next person?
And what you just said in relationship to the union person was, again, my conversation was way before, way in the beginning of the contract negotiations, S.A. And, and, and so I, and again, I was breaking no policy. No policy said that I could not do that. You know? In fact, the policy says that I could do that. When you read it, the policy says that I can do that. So the, the other thing is that in, in terms of reaching out to that employer, I made the mistake not to do that the last time something like this came up, and everyone assured me and everyone else that it was perfectly all right. All right? And I didn't do it. None of the other committee members did it. And all of a sudden, bang, it comes true, and it blows up into the public. It's not going to happen to me this time. Also, if I, if, if the superintendent had made very clear to us in a formal way that this person still had any kind of relationship with the realtor, that would suffice. But there was no, nothing in a formal statement from the superintendent to that effect. The other thing is, the information contained that you sent, Jennifer, that that person said is like over-the-top incorrect. Because they said, you mentioned that they, they mentioned my wife. How could that possibly be if I'm the person who made the call? How could my wife be even possibly mentioned?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes.
Your, your spouse's name was on the caller ID.
No, could not be. If they said that...
They, they showed us a screenshot.
I'm saying, that is impossible, because it was from my phone number. My, and I, I got my phone, and we can check the phone, you check their phone number.
I don't think that's necessary.
That's what I'm saying. If they said that, then something is terribly wrong, because I am the only one who made that phone call. Irv Rhodes.
Perhaps you made it from your landline?
No, I don't have a landline. I only have a cell phone. And the number in there, if you look at the number, and if it says 413-687-3285, that's my number.
Perhaps I will show you offline so that we don't...
Well, if you didn't redact everything, we could see it.
But I redacted to protect your spouses from, from being involved in this.
And I'm glad you did, because they'll be subject to a suit because they'll be violating her privacy.
Well, I'm glad that I did then. But I would be happy to tell you offline.
Yeah, because it wasn't, she wasn't a part of it.
Well, that was one of the things that we talked to the attorney about.
By the way, if, if that were there, then that to me invalidates that whole thing. That, that whole...
I, I disagree that, that one fact, which I'll show you maybe when we take a break, invalidates the entire set of facts.
Yeah, because it, it says that my wife called.
No. The person was clear that it was a man who called.
Well, but it had my phone number.
I'll, I'll show you offline.
All right. Anyway, and I'm saying it had my phone number. So, Jesus, I, I'm, I'm glad I heard that, because that, that's really unsettling to me. Very unsettling that my, my wife would have been brought into this when she did not make that phone call, it was me.
There, there was never any thought that your wife had made the phone call?
Then how did she get mentioned?
Her, her name was on the caller ID.
Right. Caller ID that Irv Rhodes made the phone call. I, anyway, we can look at that again. And we should sit down, look at, see, these kind of things could have been clarified and dealt with if we really just wanted to be fair and honest in front of each other. We could have cleared those things up instead of something like this. In that conversation at night, we could have done that and clarified it. All right? And clarified.
We could have if you hadn't left.
Oh, yes, Jennifer. You know, I, I think I, you know, it's, it's amazing to me that you would say that. Amazing. When you were the one who structured, you were the one who structured the meeting to, to say to me in a letter, with just, just the three of us, so we can sit down and move on in the same page. Do you, do you understand something? I want to, want you to, you and Sarah Besse to understand something. You said to me, we're going to meet just the three of us in the superintendent conference room. You didn't tell me that no one's going to be around except, except you two. Is that correct?
I had no way of knowing who was going to be in the central office on graduation day.
It was 3:30 in the afternoon.
School was over.
Well, I don't know. But it seems to me, if you, if you were me, if I would have known that, I would have never shown up. I would have never shown up that, that only the three of us were going to be in the office together. I would have never shown up if I'd have known that. Now, you, most people, the females around here don't understand that, why I wouldn't have shown up. I'm a black man with two women. With two women. You know, look, look, you don't understand how, what that mean, when, when I walked into, what that meant. When I realized that you two were the only ones in the room, it really was something that was incredibly concerning to me. And the thing is, I should have left sooner. When I, when I, when I saw that, I should have left immediately. I do not ever have wanted to be in the room alone, not in a public place with two females.
Point of order.
Yes, Deb.
So, one of the things I had asked Sarah Besse at the beginning, well, when we spoke privately the other day, was that, so this is not point of order, respecting the, the order of, of, I know you're chair, but respecting the speaking order.
Yes, great. Do you want to be back on the queue?
No.
Okay. Anna, you're next.
So, I feel like we've spent too much time on this already. I also feel like this is turning into a three-way conversation between Irv and Jennifer and Sarah Besse, and an opportunity for airing a grievance that is primarily among the three of them. And so I'd like to kind of try to find a way to wrap this up. I would also like to say that I find that this conversation is showing us that multiple people have assumed the worst of other people. I feel like Sarah Besse and Jennifer came into the meeting assuming that Irv was going to react badly. May or may not have been correct, but they did that. Irv came into the meeting and then assumed that they were attacking him as soon as Jennifer pulled out a piece of paper. I think we need to take a step back and allow people the grace of not doing the thing that you think is the worst thing that they could do. that you think is the worst thing that they could do, and just say, you know, I'm coming into this meeting with the best intentions, and it's going to go great. And for Irv to come into the meeting and say, I'm coming into this meeting, ooh, having two women in the room with only me here makes me uncomfortable, I'm just going to say, this meeting makes me uncomfortable, can we go someplace more public? That would have been totally acceptable. But not necessarily say, as soon as, you know, as soon as somebody pulls out a piece of paper, oh, that's an attack. Maybe, as Jennifer was saying, it's just a way of organizing their thoughts so that she doesn't spend a bunch of time not being able to express things, because she forgot what she wanted to say and how she wanted to say it. So I think, in addition to the fact that this meeting wasn't about any one incident, this meeting was about a few things that had happened that started to add up to say, oh, maybe we should have a conversation. What I would like to, I think other people have suggested this as well, is to now put this to rest. Let's just say, okay, we can all agree that things were not great. It doesn't really matter, nobody is to blame, this is not something that is, we're not pointing fingers here right now, what we need to do is move forward. What can we do as a committee now to make sure that all of the committee understands what we can and cannot do, when we can contact people in the school community, how we can contact people within the school community, and what we can say to those people? I think that it's pretty clear that when we're in contract negotiations, we should not be talking about anything that has to do with a contract or a point in the contract to people who are in the negotiations or can contribute to the negotiations during that process. I think we can agree to that. I think that if, even if it's early in the process or late in the process, having outside conversations with people who are involved in the process is not recommended. We need to let the negotiating committee do the negotiating. I think we can all try to be more open and more, uh, alerting when we try to have official visits, like if we're going to visit as a school committee, I want to see the school, yes, we can agree to say, hey, Dr. Z, I want to see this school, um, can you put me in touch with the principal? And then have the principal have that conversation. I think, as, as much as this was not done before, I think that Dr. Z prefers it to happen that way, and we should respect her wish that she would like to be notified and be the one to make arrangements if possible. I'm not saying that that didn't hap, like, clearly that was not done before. Clearly, other superintendents did not do it that way, but she seems to want to do that, so let's, let's do that for her, because she wants us to do that. I think if we have a concern about a particular employee, I think the correct thing to do is to go to their direct supervisor and, and have a conversation about it. Unless you can go directly to that, I mean, unless, because we cannot go directly to, you have to go to the superintendent, and then say, hey, I have this concern, I would like to talk to so-and-so, can I talk to so-and-so about this? But I think Dr. Z has made it very clear that any sort of like school committee contact with employees underneath her should go through her, and I think we need to respect that, because that's what she's asked for. And not because there's a policy against it, not because there's policy this or that allows it and this policy doesn't, but because that's what Dr. Z has expressed as her desire, and I think we can just say, I will do what you want me to do, because I think that's respectful. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of done with talking about-
Who said what?
Whether, who said what, whether it was correct, whether it was incorrect, whether it was bad, whether it was okay. I, I just don't think that that's as important now. I think we now need to talk about, how can we move forward? Are there specific things, guidances that we can all follow? And are there specific guidances that we think are unreasonable and we should have a discussion about now, because it gets in our way of being school committee members and running a district that is useful?
One thing, one thing Dr. Z doesn't want is for us to be calling her and setting, asking her to set up appointments. I can guarantee you, if she were sitting here right now, she would say, that is not what I want. And obviously, she wouldn't want that. All we, the policy is what it is in terms of notification. Notification does not mean that she has to approve or disapprove of us going to a school. She can't. That's not within her purview to make that decision. She can't stop a public elected official from going and visiting this school. She, she just can't, that's not in their power to do, do that.
William, you're up next, and then Irv, if you, do, do, I had you after William, and then me. So, William.
Yeah, I'm about to get done with this.
I, I was just going to say, I have a lot of feelings on it, but I really think that this is really a conversation that we should carry forward. You know, we set goals about how to be effective, a more effective school committee, we should really look at those goals and really look at what we can all decide are going to be our norms, because I know, I, this is speaking for myself, but it's been my, I have seen in practice for Pelham, none of the Pelham committee members would set up a tour of Pelham Elementary without talking to the superintendent first. That seems to be a norm that's in Pelham. I'm not sure what the norm is in Amherst. After listening to people talk tonight, it doesn't seem that's what the norm is. So, I do think we should probably sit down and really figure out what our goals are, what our norms can be, what we think we should be able to do and not be able to do, and have those conversations amongst ourselves and also with the superintendent. On the second piece with the union negotiations, Sarah Bass and I are on those negotiations, and we started it in a collaborative IDB format. We were not bringing proposals forward. So, it's really difficult to sit here and hear that a proposal was brought directly to them, and we were not bringing proposals to them at that time. We had decided as a school committee and decided as a union that we were going to go into these negotiations collaboratively. Tim, I do, I want to thank you for saying it must have been an intense moment. It was. When the union member came to us and had a conversation with us, it was very tense and uncomfortable. The, the third one of going to the employee and speaking to their, a boss, I have a huge concern with that, because we are not, I, I don't think we can control any employee's time after they're done working for us. So, I don't understand how we can say, you can't have a second job, or you can't have a side job. I don't, I don't understand that, so I, I really think it is really inappropriate for us to do that, and I hope that in our goal settings, that we can set some norms and goals about going forward. Those would not be conversations we as a school committee member individually or collectively would decide we need to have. Thank you.
Thank you, William.
Point of order.
Irv, and then me, and then Bridgette.
One thing, just one thing. William, when you have a senior manager with five direct reports, you, you can't say to the public, well, you know, whatever she does with her time is her own time, she has a second job, that's fine. I live in Amherst, and I guarantee you that people, that would not go down well with people in Amherst, where a senior-level person who has five direct reports-
Point of order.
Point of order. Let's be careful about identity of the employee.
Point of order. It's been two hours, three hour, no, two hours and fifty-three minutes. Three hours, right? Three hour, no, two hours and fifty-three minutes. It's been over two and a half hours.
I would like to cut this out, but I want to make sure that the record, record doesn't say anything in relationship to what Jennifer read, because a lot of it is very false, and for that to be reported is not something that should occur, because it's frankly very false.
Sarah Bass.
I move we extend the regional school committee meeting by thirty minutes.
My second. Do we discuss this?
I am exhausted.
I think we don't discuss meetings to, motions to adjourn.
I think we can discuss that quickly. I would like to, I have made the motion, because I would like to finish this conversation so we can move forward and be done.
I, I agree, I don't, I, I don't hear how we can move on to next steps. I don't hear how we can move on to next steps, or how we can move forward as a committee based on where we are right now.
I mean, I, I would like to continue, but I also want, I really am disturbed by things that Jennifer had brought forward that are just incredibly false. False and not supported by, by evidence, and I don't know where that, especially that phone call with my wife's name on it. I am really upset about that. All right? That was brought forward without checking with me. I didn't know-
Point of order. The discussion is on the vote to adjourn.
So, I, I definitely want to continue, but I also-
Thank you, Irv.
I also want to make sure that that is not a part of the record.
Okay. Bridgette?
I'm, I'm going to vote to adjourn. I agree with Anna that I think this is something that's an interpersonal conflict between some of the adults on the committee, and I agree with William that definitely we have to have a different discussion about what some of our norms, policies, and practices are, and come to some consensus, so that we can be working from a shared understanding instead of pointing fingers all at each other. So, I'm voting to adjourn.
So, the, the motion is to extend.
Yeah. Oh, to extend. I'm voting against that motion.
Thank you. Okay, for the region, Jennifer.
Yes. I mean, sorry, yes to, yes to extending, thank you.
Yes, to extend. Okay. Bridgette?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Irv?
No.
No to extending the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm tired.
Deb?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
And Sarah Bass, yes. The region is in session for another thirty minutes.
I move to extend the Amherst School Committee meeting by thirty minutes.
Are you at thirty minutes? I mean, are you at two and a half?
I don't know. Deb, no, you made the, for the, I don't recall.
It was right before executive session.
Point of order.
Yes, William.
You're right at it.
I, I don't thi, I, I don't think that Deb ever made anything for the Amherst, so I don't think we have to discuss that.
No, there, she, no, you said, okay, so let's just keep going.
Point of order.
Yes, Bridgette.
For the, um, speaking for Amherst, two and a half hours have elapsed.
Okay, so then I'll move to extend the Amherst School Committee meeting by thirty minutes. Is there a second? So there's no second for Amherst, so I'm going to adjourn the Amherst School Committee meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn Amherst School Committee.
Second. Thank you. We don't discuss. Jennifer's a no. Bridgette?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Irv? We're moving to adjourn the Amherst School Committee.
Oh, definitely, yes.
And Deb?
Yes.
Okay, so the Amherst School Committee is adjourned. Irv, did you, but the regional school committee is still in session. Irv, did you want to continue talking, or talk about how my facts were false, or, I, I'm next on the queue, but I want to make sure that you-
Yeah, I want, want you to understand that your facts are false on that, on the phone call.
Okay.
Totally 100% false. The only thing would have been correct would have been that my phone number was there. I did call, and my phone number should have been the only phone number listed. If someone else's phone number was listed, then that's wrong. The other thing is that what that person said was, I, the statements that person made were totally false. I didn't say any of those things. I made really quick thing, the phone call, the, both phone calls were three minutes, total of three minutes, if you look at the timing, both of them. So, he said I called multiple times. Totally false, the guy's lying through his teeth. If I called up and said that I'm attorney representing Irv Rhodes, and here's what we got, in terms of what you said, I guarantee you that he would disavow everything he said.
Okay, I have myself, then Bridgette, and then Sarah. I, I have several things that I want to say and respond to. First, the idea about the Crocker Farm visit, as I've said at the beginning, I think is the least egregious, and it was only included because it was, I saw it as part of a pattern. But if that had been the only instance that was brought to my attention, I would have done the same thing that I did with two other school, two other Amherst School Committee members, who I learned had visited a school and, and sort of CC'd the superintendent, but didn't, um, didn't check with her beforehand, which is that I, um, I emailed them both, and I said, in the future, I would ask that you email the superintendent, just so that there's a paper trail, before making arrangements to visit a school, and I provided a link to the policy. And one of them responded, thanks, will do, and the other one responded, I did tell her about the Fort River visit, next time I'll do that in the reverse order. So both of those school committee members were, were, I, I talked to both of them, and they both easily agreed to follow the policy in the future.
But you didn't do that to me.
I, I didn't, because it was part of, because I, this all came together as part of a pattern. So, I'll also say that the, the, the way that we were notified about these school visits is that Dr. Z sent an email in May, which is one of the emails that I attached, letting us know that she had become aware that school committee members were visiting schools without first, without first notifying her. And it's not about asking for her, for permission. She has said she would never not give permission. It's a professional courtesy to let her know that you're going to be arranging a visit. She sent an email to the Amherst School Committee saying, this has happened, I want you to be aware. She said she does as well as she can with making sure she understands which, like, following policies and making sure she understands communication protocols. So she sent that email, and then Irv then responded to the full Amherst School Committee saying that he had done this with Crocker Farm, that, that's how I knew about it, was because of the email that you sent to the full school committee, that he had done this with Crocker Farm, and he CC'd her, and he didn't want to be caught up in what she was saying. So there was an attempt to email the whole committee and say, hey, hey, these are rules we should follow, but unfortunately, Irv didn't think that she was referring to him. So, that's the first thing. But, but as I said, I'm willing to drop that, because I think it's the least egregious, and as I said, if that was the only instance, I, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be here. I, I want to say something about, it, the, I was very, very shocked when I found out that Irv had contacted the former employer of our, of our district employee. I was very shocked. I thought it was very inappropriate. And I agree with William that it's not our responsibility or purview to tell anyone what they can and can't do when they're not working for the, when they're off, when they're after hours. It, it, it is appropriate in cases like the superintendent, who I don't think even has a, I don't know, that the superintendent has a clause in her contract about not doing other work. I know our previous assistant superintendent did, but given that there's no clause saying that, and, and anyone else's contract saying that they can't do another job off, off hours, I think it's very inappropriate to, to do that. In addition, I also Googled this person, found the website that I believe Irv also found, and I thought, huh, this looks, I, I don't understand what's happening, this looks odd. And so, what, I, I, so sorry, I want to back up and say, to me, it feels like, Irv, what you did was sort of lone wolf behavior. It feels like you thought you were the only one protecting the school district, and you went off and did something that you thought was the, I understand you thought it was the right thing. I had a different approach, which is that I, I saw it, I sat with it. The first person I contacted was Sarah Bass as the regional chair, and I talked it out with her. And I was like, I found this, it makes me uncomfortable, I'm not sure what it means, what should we do about it? We talked it out, and I determined that I should then contact Dr. Z. So I did, I contacted Dr. Z about it, we talked about it, I came to understand the situation. Because we're a team, we're part of a collective that is all charged with protecting the district, I heard Irv say, that's not going to happen to me again, and I want to say, there's no me in this, it's, it's all of us. So, I, I guess I want to urge everyone, including Irv, especially Irv, to consider that you have colleagues and you have peers that you can bounce ideas off of, instead of taking matters into your own hands. People have been commenting on decisions that the chairs made, both in having the meeting and having, the meeting with Irv, and having this meeting the way we've had it, and I just want to say, I hear your input. I, I don't- I, I don't, I don't know that I could have or would have done anything differently. Irv asked several times to bring this to a full session. We offered to have it in executive session. We asked committee members what you all wanted, so it, it got to the point where we, we, we had to do this. I mean, yeah. And if this is making you uncomfortable, I, I just would urge you to lean into your discomfort because I think that these are important things that we're talking about. Sorry, I just want to make sure. And, and, you know, the reason that all those emails were attached was because Irv CC'd the Regional School Committee on all those emails. I thought that they might come up, and I wanted to make sure that, um, that, that all those emails were, were made public because I thought we might, we might use them. I talked about not interrupting each other, not because I specifically thought Irv would interrupt, but because I actually was worried people would interrupt him, and I wanted to make sure that everyone got to say what they wanted to say. So, when it comes to talking to staff, there's a difference between seeing someone at the grocery store or at a game and chatting with them. And there's a difference between, like, if a staff member contacts you, you may speak with them, you may hear their concerns. You are permitted to do that if a staff member contacts you. Uh, and then, yes, Deb?
I think we're getting away from the agenda.
Yeah.
This is the agenda item I wanted in the first place, but I think we're getting away from it.
Okay. So, I'm gonna say that. Sorry, I have notes, but I wanted to make sure I say it and everything that I wanted to say. I, I just, I feel that we, that in order for us to move forward with shared agreements and shared understandings, and, and in order for us to, like, come up with norms and follow guidance, then, then we all, including Irv, have to agree to follow that guidance and to follow those norms. And so far, I haven't heard Irv say that he would do anything differently in the future, which is why, which is why I wanted to have this conversation because in that June sixth meeting, Irv left saying that he would not follow policies or he would not follow protocols. Sorry, I keep saying policies. I don't mean policies because I don't think we should, as someone else has said, I don't think we should stick to whether, the, the very black and white issue of whether or not a policy was followed. But Dr. Z has asked us to go through her when we have questions for staff. So, the contacting APEA was very inappropriate. The contacting the former employer was very inappropriate. The, then contacting the employer themselves, they, they didn't answer the phone, is what we were told. And so, Irv didn't talk to them. But he then emailed them and told them what he was gonna say, which is that they needed to sever ties.
I'm, I'm sorry.
With their.
I, I, I'm sorry. Are you talk, who, who did I email? Are you talk, are you talking about the employee?
Yeah, yeah, you emailed the employee, and you copied the whole school committee, telling the employee what you were gonna say in your phone call, which is that they should sever ties with their former employer, which I also think is super inappropriate. Not the school committee's place to tell anyone what they, not, not anyone. Not the school committee's place to tell this person what they can and can't do during their, their, during their time. If that's a discussion to bring to the committee about adding to their contract, that would have been, I, I would have, that would have been appropriate. But I was really, really shocked at contacting the employer and then at contacting the, the district employee. So, I don't see how we can move on with following guidance or shared norms. Yes, Deb?
So, the agenda item is discussion of the, what is the agenda?
Actions taken.
Actions. We have discussed it and discussed it and discussed it. That's a different issue. You want a resolution.
Yeah, I do want a resolution.
That's not discussion, that's not discussion.
No, no, Jennifer, you just went off.
We're just going around in circles.
Yeah, but can I, can I just respond to everything you just said?
Yes, Irv, and then I have Bridgette and Sarah, and then maybe we can wrap up.
Wait.
Oh, yes.
Was that Sarah or Sarah Bass?
Sarah. You want to go after Sarah? Uh, Sarah, Sarah Bass, you want to go after Sarah Marshall?
That would be great, thank you.
Okay. Irv, go ahead.
When you say that it was shocking that I contacted the employer, the employer of someone who was employed by us, that that was shocking for me to do. Now, I'm assuming you're saying that the person was employed there while being employed by us. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Well, you just said I contacted the employer.
Sorry, I meant former employer.
All right, then, then you're, you're, you stand corrected. So, if I contacted the former employer of someone who was working here, and A B, it's A, if I did that, then there is no, zero, zero breaking of any policy we have in, in, in place. Nothing that says I couldn't have done what I did. And if you can show me what policy says that I could not have done that, then I will say, I'll never do that again.
Point of order. Amherst School Committee is adjourned. So, so, that is a point of order. Why is, why is, um, Jennifer chairing?
If people can speak into my, I can't hear anything anyone is saying.
My mic is dead.
Oh. I'll hand my, hand my list to Sarah.
I, I think that what Deb is saying is that if the, uh, Amherst School Committee is in recess or, or adjourned, then why is Jennifer continuing to talk for Amherst? All right, she can't, which is a good thing because, uh.
So, the last thing Jennifer said was her comments as herself on her list. So, if you would-
And I'm, and I'm trying to respond in saying that those things that she said, a lot of the things she said were false. That the, the, that I, I called the, uh, employer. It turns out it wasn't the employer. Then, and, and that was outrageous because I shouldn't be call, calling the person, the person's employer. If the person, if it isn't the employer, it's the former employer, what issue or problem would that, would that cause? As A, and, and, and B, again, if there were any policies that I violated, please list them. All right? Please list them. Because if, and if I follow policies that were in place that are in contradiction or alongside of those policies, then what policies take precedence? All right? So, all I'm saying is, if we're gonna do, this is gonna be a formal thing, and we're gonna accuse Irv Rhodes of violating pro, policies, and there was a, there was a pattern of violating policies, I want to know specifically what policies were violated, and then I want to be able to say, "Hey, well, that's policy this, policy A, but hey, policy B says I can do that." And if I can do that, policy B says I can do that, and policy A can, uh, says I can't, then there's policies in conflict. Then what I have done, what I have done, I have not violated, and I'll say it again, I operated within the confines of the policies that we have written in our policy manual. And if you can point out to me where I haven't followed those policies, then that would be great. But I know that you can't. So, everything for, for, in, in terms of this meeting, in terms of conclusions, if this was all about following policies, I have followed all the available policies, and I've worked within the available policy guidelines. And for you to say to the public that I didn't, that I was following a pa, a pattern of not following the policies, then that is totally one hundred percent false. And you cannot present any evidence to the contrary.
Thank you, Irv. Um, so I have Bridgette, Sarah, myself, and Tim.
I think the feeling that I have is there's a lot of rigidity in the, the sort of things people are saying, and there's not a lot of listening or coming towards or working to find a shared understanding. And the, the reason why I said before, like, I wasn't trying to be difficult to say enough of this conflict, it's that I don't think that this is the kind of forum where you can come to that place and really hear, like, hear the harm that was done, hear the, the reason why you feel like this was unjust, all those things. Like, I think people need to hear each other and listen to each other. And maybe I just feel that way because I see strong truths on both sides. And that's always when conflicts get embedded. And I don't want an embedded conflict on this committee. We've worked so well together, and that's what's really harmed past committees. So, I don't, I don't know, like, if there's a, you know, an ombudsman or a person to work together and sort of have the conversation so everybody can feel heard and listened to and move forward. And that's, that's what I'd like, and I just don't think this is the context for it.
I agree.
Thank you. Sarah?
Huh, thanks. It's my understanding, stupid mic, is it working?
Yep.
Okay. That the only reason we're having this public discussion is because Irv asked for a public discussion. None of this would have been public. People wouldn't be hearing all these things that, that you are finding objectionable and untrue. Okay, that's one thing. Second of all, um, I think it was Irv who said earlier in this meeting that not everything that's legal is right. So, again, just because a policy may not have, maybe you followed all the policies. But to me, that, to me, that's not the issue so much as, were the things you did, and I understand you dispute, there's a dispute about what you did. But in the most general terms, I think you agree that you contacted an APA, the, maybe the union president, I don't remember, and that you tried to learn something about an employee. I don't think those were wise. I don't think that was, those were right, even, this is my opinion, even if they didn't violate any policy.
That's the only reason we're here, because Sarah Bass-
We're here because you asked for a public meeting.
No, we're here because they said I-
Please pause. Sarah is being-
Stop interrupting me, I have the floor.
You have the floor, and I just-
Okay.
I'll come back with it.
When you're called on. So, I don't, we're, we are truly going around in circles. I guess at some point, the thirty minutes will be up, and then we will just stop. I would just ask that if there's going to be any further discussion, because there's not gonna be a meeting of the minds, clearly, that we just put it on a retreat agenda. Or get someone from MASC to talk with us, discuss some of these policies or these procedures, not even the policies. But we need to move on. There's not gonna be, like, this is not judge and jury. No decision about Irv or anything is being made, so let's move on.
Thank you. So, I have myself on the list now. So, there were a, a couple of pieces that have come up that I wanted to clarify. So, there was, all right, I also wrote things down, so I didn't forget them. There was a conversation about having come to a meeting with prepared notes, which, as you can see, this is a big discussion. And I also, like, we're going to have a big discussion. I'd like to come prepared with the things I want to make sure I say and in the way I want to say them because I can be brash and harsh sometimes. And that was not the intent of that meeting, and that was not how I walked into it. So, there was that piece, I think, um, when the president of the APA knew about the conversation, she, she, she did say that, you know, he had, Irv had contacted me, and it was off the record. However, I think Bridgette mentioned before, like, the school committee and the union this year are working very well together during our contract negotiations. And it, anything that could possibly undermine that tentative relationship felt really big. And so, we, we can't know if that harmed or did not harm the way the negotiations were going. And like Sarah said, even if it is not specifically called out in a policy, it's still bad form, right? In my opinion. So, I also want to mention, um, as some, someone had brought up the, the emails that were attached, because this was a conversation that had emails, that was now, and being talked about by the full committee, in my opinion, in order to be in compliance with open meeting law, the email conversations needed to be included in this, in, in this agenda. And I also, um, what employees choose to do on their time outside of when they are working for us, as long as it's legal, I, I don't see how we can tell them what they can and cannot do.
I wish you wouldn't have said that in public.
So, I think those were the main points I wanted to make. And, and I also hear what everybody had said. I don't like these conversations either. And they are hard and they are uncomfortable. However, when we, Jennifer and I first tried to have a meeting with just Irv in order to have this conversation and not have it be like this. And then, when, um, Irv said he wanted it to come to the full committee and it wanted to, to be a full meeting, we then also offered it to be an executive session because according to the guidance we, we received from MASC, that this is, this is a permissible under, um, purpose one conversation. And so, we did try to not have it be like this. And so, I, I would love us to find a way to move forward. But I, I think for moving forward, we have to move through. So, that is why we are having the conversation. Okay. That is all for me, thank you. Tim? Would you like to be on the list again, Irv?
I, I would like to, before we wrap up this meeting, make a final statement. Given that this is about me.
I will add you to the list. I do already have you on the list. I have Tim and Deb and then Irv.
Thank you. There's only two more minutes before someone calls a point of order about our extension.
Okay. Talk quick.
It, it, so Deb called a point of order about drifting away from the agenda topic, and I think that was correct. There, there has been, and, and I think Anna spoke well to this too, that there's an element of this which is clearly committee business. There's an element of this which seems more interpersonal between Irv, Jennifer, and Sarah Bass. I just want to say that I recognize a point that I think Irv has been making all along, which is that he has, he's a public elected official. He, you know, has an autonomy, and it's not clear to me what the statutory outcome of policy violation is. So, there's been, there's been no discussion of that. And maybe there doesn't need to be because Irv asked that we have this discussion. So, it may simply be that things remain broken, and that's fine. We can, we can work with that. I, I would say that, you know, as a fellow committee member, Irv, I just want you to know that from my perspective, I see you as a peer and as someone that I want to learn from as a committee member. I also want to be on a committee where district employees feel emotionally and professionally safe with us. And that is just how I feel about that situation. Jennifer and Sarah Bass, I see you both as chairs with experience. I look up to you, and I want to do what I can to support your work. I have no real issues other than what I've said earlier, which is not much. Um, and I, I don't, I think that because things have gotten heated and interpersonal in this discussion, I just want to point out one thing, and I don't, Jennifer, I don't want to make it seem like I'm making you wrong, but I just want to point out one thing is that in this kind of conversation, language can get away with us. And I would suggest and feel more comfortable if we didn't use terms- if we didn't use terms like lone wolf behavior. That is just one thing that stood out to me, that in a heated conversation, we have to be extra careful about the words we use. To the point that you made, that preparing a statement is a very sound practice when dealing with a heated situation. Right? So, that's all I have to say, and I really appreciate that everyone has been here tonight for this. I honestly think that this is the kind of thing that makes a group stronger, or at least can, if we're all willing to let it.
I have a question before you make your statement. Are you going to call time? Okay, I only say because I wanted to make sure Irv had a chance to speak.
Yes, that's why I'm...
Thank you, okay. Irv?
All right, so, this was supposed to be a conversation about Irv Rhodes consistently breaking policy BHC. I mean, that's, that was what the letter stated, that myself and Jennifer and Sarah Bass were going to meet about, our policy on BHC. That's what you wrote here, all right, that we're going to talk about. And, it seems to me that when someone says, "We're going to talk about policy BHC, and we want to discuss this with you so that we are all on the same page moving forward," that we all, you know, that A, you contact the attorney, and B, you come prepared with information, with prepared notes. If it's going to be something where we're just going to discuss it, all right, you already knew what violations I supposedly have of BHC. This discussion tonight was beyond BHC. Items that you brought in had nothing to do with BHC. There were other items, it might have been something else, but it certainly wasn't BHC. Contacting the employer was not BHC at all, nowhere. All right, that was not. But again, it's not that. It's, again, both you and Sarah Bass maintain that you were both doing this meeting innocently, and you came prepared with notes, because she really wanted to have information, and that you contacted the attorney just to make sure that this was something that was going to not be untoward. You know, if you'd have said, "Hey, Irv, by the way, when we're having this meeting, we contacted the attorney," that would have been one thing. But you both didn't. That's what I call fairness. That's what I call being upfront in notification, et cetera. When you don't do that, and you do it after the fact, after the fact, then it builds suspicions in my mind that you had ulterior, other ulterior motives, that you didn't let me know. And that you were not out to have a discussion. You were not just, you were not out to have a discussion, but you were out to what Dr. Z said in one of her comments to us. You were out to say, "Gotcha." That's what that felt like to me. That you, you know, you wanted to play "gotcha" with me, all right? Among other things, but that's... I guess what I want you, Jennifer, here, and you, Sarah Bass, to hear, is that that, to me, was out of line. It was not something that was peer-to-peer. That was not something where you wanted to build on the relationship. It's not something that you wanted to discuss with me in good faith. For me, you broke that good faith, you know, the good faith that I assumed was there. It wasn't there. It wasn't good faith on your part with me. And I want you to hear that. You did not act in good faith with me, at all. I was coming to that meeting prepared, prepared to sit down and say, hey, you know, what have I done, let's talk about this, let's make this right. Let's get on the same page, like you said, Jennifer, get on the same page. That's what I was prepared to do. I came out of the house with no notes, nothing, because we were just going to have a conversation. And, when I ran into that, that was jarring. It was jarring, and for you, Jennifer, and Sarah Bass, not to understand that is beyond me. Really beyond me. Because if you were in the same situation, I guarantee you, you would feel the same way. Especially after the fact, when you said to me, you said you contacted an attorney. That really was like a final stab in the back. If you're going to be collegial, you want to work together as a team, you want us to go down the same path together, then you must act that in words and deed. And the thing for every last one of us, and certainly I've said this to other people before, and it's very hard for me, it's one of the hardest things that I have to do in my entire life, and I don't always adhere to it. And that is attribute a positive intent to a person's words and deeds and actions. It's the most difficult thing to do. And God knows I try to do it, but I'm not always there. I'm just not always there. And I have experiences and suspicions and stuff where I have been hurt on this committee. This committee has been destroyed by things that we thought were true. We thought were true, was given that truth by people who were in authority, and then we got stabbed in the back about it. And if you, and if I am going to be, say, hey, I'm guilty, we're contacting that, first of all, we don't know whoever's an employer or a past employer. If it's a past employer, then I don't think, how is that a problem? But anyway, I was not going to allow that to happen again. And it's not a matter of, like Dr. Z said, when I said, "Trust, but verify." It's not her, it's not Ms., it is something that I consider to be the responsibility of the school committee, to do as the policy says, to keep ourselves informed. We have to be informed. We cannot be like babes in the woods. We cannot act like we're just innocents and everything's going to be all right. We can't act as if politics aren't involved. We can't act as if everything's just going to be rosy, and everything's going, everyone's going to play by the rules. People don't play by the rules. Now, my last thing. Sarah Bass and Jennifer, you hurt me. You hurt me by your actions because you didn't need to go down that road.
So, go ahead, I'm going to say the same thing, so.
Point of order, it's been 39 minutes since we extended.
I move to adjourn the regional school committee, second.
Second.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Bridgette, thank you. Sarah?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Deb?
Yep.
Tim?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
And Sarah Bass, yes, we are adjourned.